Burlington School Committee meeting of October 24th, 2023. I want to, you know, the public can also access this meeting via WebEx technology. The Burlington School Committee will hear public comments in person and virtually. Meetings are also broadcast live on BCAT, Burlington Cable Access TV, and video audio recordings are being made. This meeting of the Burlington School Committee is being held in person at the School Committee Room in the Burlington Public Schools Central Office. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item in this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The, um, the jo- the number to join for this meeting, the number access is three, uh, sorry, two, three, four, five, six, two, zero, one, six, nine, eight, and the meeting password is Tuesday with a capital T. If you are participating remotely, please identify yourself by typing your name on the screen in advance and verbally once you are identified to speak. We request you please turn on your camera, and comments and statements are limited to three minutes. I'll now read the equity statement for the Burlington Public Schools. Educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support they need to develop their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child and individual. And now we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, the next is, I would entertain a motion to approve the warrant, and I, uh, I think we only need one, um, one day. Do, do we have the date on the warrant that needs the vote? Are they over there?
I have it.
You have it. Uh, there's two, one.
Ten, nine.
The warrant of October 9th, twen- nineteen, 2023. So moved?
Second.
Okay, uh, further discussion? Uh, all those in favor? No?
Aye.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, that's five, zero, zero. Thank you. Uh, now, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the meeting minutes of October 10th, 2023. It's been moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I need to abstain, I was unable to attend due to work.
Uh, no, no opposition, one abstention, and the Chair votes aye, so that's four, zero, one. Um, next, we have our, um, public participation, uh, oper- uh, time, and, um, there's a piece of paper in here, I'm trying to find. And I will call on people from the audience shortly. Um, I just wanted to say that, uh, we know there have been devastating events in the Middle East, far from our town, but impacting many of our students and families. As a school district, what is our role and responsibility? It is our role to take care of our students and families, all of them. We know that there is sorrow and anger and a fear of backlash in some parts of our community. You are not invisible, you belong. If your child needs support, please reach out and let their teacher or guidance counselor know. We are all feeling powerless about what is happening right now. What we can have an impact on is how we treat each other. Let us treat each other with kindness. In the Burlington Public Schools, our goal is to create a place with no room for hate. We need to share what we all have in common and build community. I believe that we all agree on the goal that all of our students and families feel respect, acceptance, and belonging regardless of their background or religion. I know that there are people here tonight who want to comment at public participation time about recent events. You are welcome. I want to remind people that public participation is not a time for dialogue. Each speaker will have three minutes. It's a good thing that people are talking about difficult issues. Thank you for coming tonight, and, um, I would like to call you up first, okay? Thank you.
All right. First of all, thank you for having us here. I wanted to also start with reading the Burlington Equity Statement from the website. Educational equity means that every child belongs and receives whatever support he, she, they need to develop his, her, their full academic, emotional, and social potential to learn and thrive every day. This begins with kindness and valuing the humanity of every child or individual. It takes courage to slow down, and it takes courage to choose. I am sitting here and choosing the children of the world, of Israel and Palestine. I'm sta- sitting here to talk about why I chose to send my children to the Burlington School System. I chose to send my children to the Burlington School System and to call Burlington home because of the community, because of the focus on the diversity, equity, and inclusion. Burlington is a community that my family has always felt a big part of. What I value about this community is that all children here feel a sense of belonging regardless of their chil- their family's cultural identities or religious backgrounds. For example, one of my next-door neighbors is Jewish, and she and her daughter came to my Eid party to celebrate with us at the end of Ramadan. We built menorahs together to participate in their celebration, and we celebrate Diwali with our Indian neighbors, and have Christmas dinner with our Italian neighbor next door every year. We all live on the same street, our children go to the same schools, and they play together. The children don't know of any cultural or religious differences. They're all friends. When you ask all the children how they identify themselves, first and foremost, you will hear resounding, "I'm American." To the children, their identity is that they're American and they call Burlington home. They take pride in the activities around the town and constantly show school spirit. My children love this community, their school, their teachers, and their friends. My children have always felt a sense of belonging here. We've been a part of this community for almost 10 years now, and in this last decade, I have always seen this town lead with progressive values. That's one of the reasons I love living in Burlington and actively contribute to its culture and values. The problem arises when the school district, which my family so hard, wholeheartedly believes in, sends a one-sided message and chooses a side in a political fight, making a conscious choi- choice to marginalize minority groups within the town and to marginalize hundreds of students. I read the community me- I read the community message from the school on the war in the Middle East, expressing their sympathy for the loss of civilian life in Israel and condemning antisemitism. This is essential and the right thing to do. It's important to recognize the trauma and to sympathize with our friends in the Jewish community who have had to go through something so tragic. However, this community message has fallen short in the school district's ability to acknowledge Palestinian civilians' suffering. This Jewish district should also be vocal in talking about what our Muslim families are facing, which is rising in our country as a result of this war. Islamophobia is rising in our country as a result of the war that's happening really far away, as Martha commented. Just look at the recent killing of six-year-old Wadiel Foyyum in Chicago. Equity and inclusion require an acknowledgement that all life is precious regardless of ethnicity or religion. That's not a message that can be buried in fine print or left open to interpretation. It needs to come through loud and clear. The school district issuing a one-sided statement during this crisis creates a risk of the district being perceived as tone deaf and alienating a large population of Burlington citizens and students in town. There are hundreds of Muslim students in the school district. As Americans, we were, we are more informed of social injustice issues than we were even a few years ago. I'd request and encourage the Burlington School District to move beyond the false dichotomy of expressing sympathy for one side and send an inclusive community message, a written message that upholds the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion that the school district abides by. I'm requesting and urging the school district to choose all children over everything else. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, is there someone else who would like to speak in person tonight? Okay, yes, please come on up. If you wouldn't mind giving your name, that would be great.
Of course.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Marwa El-Sabahi, um, and I'm one of the physicians in this community, um, honorable Chair, um, and honorable members of the committee. I do thank you for your time tonight, it is very much appreciated. So I want to start by saying that my husband and I chose this town specifically because of the diversity that it offers. We love Burlington, we've been here for years. I have a child who went through the elementary school system, she's in high school now, and I have another child in the elementary school. And the school has always been incredibly accommodating in terms of the children praying at school if they have to, fasting during Ramadan. Uh, it is really, really appreciated, and I just want to stress that. I would like to preface what I'm about to say with making it very clear that as a Muslim, I do not condone killing of innocent souls. It doesn't matter what religion they are, it doesn't matter where they come from. This was a horrific and heinous act that occurred on October 7th. And what happened has caused a lot of grief in our community as well as in the nation as a whole. We know that the Jewish community is in mourning, we know that they have safety concerns, we understand those concerns. We see all of their fears and their sorrow as a mirror of our own community. The Muslim community feels the exact same way. And I would like to say that the issue is that we do not feel that we have been acknowledged. We have, we as a community, many of us, we do come from that region. My husband and I actually grew up in that area of the world, and so it hits very close to home. And with constant news coming out of that area, it's very difficult to process. Uh, this is particularly difficult for my high school daughter. She is aware of what's going on, we don't keep it from her. I would like to say that one of my husband's medical school colleagues lost five of his family members in one day and 25 of his family members another day when their entire house was destroyed into rubble. So we understand what it means to feel profoundly sad, we truly do, and the email that was sent out did not acknowledge the Muslim community unfortunately. We fully agree and do not argue with addressing what happened on October 7th. We fully agree with supporting our Jewish community, there's no argument for that. But my issue is that the school in general, or the way I think of a school district, is that it should be non-political and very neutral. And so, when the school district chooses to weigh in on a very contentious, catastrophic, decades-long geopolitical situation without addressing the other side, we as Muslims feel marginalized. It's very difficult for me to explain how marginalization feels, but the media does this to us every day, and it tends to trickle down unfortunately. The Palestinians have been under decades-long occupation and oppression, and there is currently a genocide going on in the Gaza Strip. So, my sadness is extremely profound, and that's an understatement. By having us not be acknowledged, we do feel marginalized. When Palestinians are not given pictures and faces to numbers of deaths, we feel unseen and unheard. They're just numbers, right? They're just collateral, and that's how we feel. That projects onto us and it projects onto our children unfortunately. Over the past couple of weeks now, with increasing death and destruction, with more innocent lives taken than I care to count, including mainly women and children, we have received no formal acknowledgement from the school. And so, my ask of you, my hope, is that in the future, if the school chooses to weigh in on an issue such as this, please do reach out to the interfaith community first. I think it would have been very appropriate to reach out to our Imam before that initial email was sent, and I do thank you for your time.
Thank you for sharing those thoughts. Is there someone else here tonight who, um, would like to speak? Ah, Imam Shakil, um, please come on up. I will check that too, I didn't look like there was, but I can't get on to the website.
Martha, are you? Martha, how are you doing?
Yeah, oh, yes, please, please come up.
How are you?
How am I? I am okay, not, you know, it's been a very tough couple of weeks, but thank you for asking, and how are you?
Good, doing well.
All right.
Trying to.
Good, and is the green light on?
Yes.
Because we want to be sure to hear what you have to say. Thank you. Can you, um, actually say your full name for the, for people who are watching who may not know you as well as I do?
Shakil Rahman Mia, the Imam of the Islamic Center of Burlington.
Thank you.
Bismillah Rahmanul Rahim, in the name of God, most gracious, most merciful, Assalamualaikum Warahmatullah, peace be upon you all. Respect to school administration, committee, and superintendent. Speaking on behalf of the Islamic Center of Burlington, as well as the Muslim population living here, I want to say that I know that being a teacher and trying to juggle both education and our students' moral development is challenging. But what I want to focus on in this moment of crisis is the need to strive towards peace. I've always been someone who tries to keep people united against injustice in whatever way we can, and I thank that I've met someone like Rabbi Susan, who shares the same sentiments. It is important to reach to the other side of the aisle, or else we will remain in our own echo chambers, never unifying but always fighting. Having said that, in my attempt to kind of reach over to the other side, I want to say that there are innocent lives lost on both sides. There are tragedies on both sides and horrible stories on both sides. Dr. Conti's words, although well-intentioned, felt to the Muslims as if the Palestinian voice was completely silenced. I do not mean to offend or disrespect my, with my words, but the Muslims in the community were deeply hurt to hear about the loss of food, water, and electricity to innocent human beings. And once the message came out, it felt like we were completely shut out of the conversation. Comparing the value of these lives is irresponsible. The Quran says, whoever kills an innocent person is as if they have killed all of mankind. In order to move forward and pave the path to peace, we have to look past the sides. My job as an Imam is, is to be an educator, to help those in our communities find ways to channel their feelings and emotions into being productive in their relationship to God and to other human beings. I am an advocate for peace, and I always have been, as was the teachings of our Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him. My hope as an educator, and I pray that every other educator in Burlington thinks the same way, is that we should think of ways to unite our students on being advocates for peace. Kids have been coming to me this whole week with the disappointment and sadness they felt in class, as well as educators and teachers trying their best to be there for their students, yet at the same time making these children feel like they were singled out and, and kind of feeling awkward. I mean, at the end of the day, being that they are self-conscious and, you know, hormonal and awkward teenagers, right, that they are, they don't want to have a million eyes on them. They're, and they're only okay with that when they're behind a YouTube screen, you know? Um, so, the world is though, is making them feel like they have to take sides. But in reality, the only way towards peace has never been to take a side. The only way is that we have to hold a hand to the oppressor and stop him from his oppression. Then it is to forgive the oppressor to stop the cycle of violence and hatred. These are the morals we want in our classrooms. It is, it, it is said that the first casualty of war is the truth. And we as educators have to stand for the truth, whether it's good for us or against us, whether it's bitter or sweet, whether it goes down easy or it's difficult to swallow. We can easily condemn the killing of innocents by Hamas, this is a no-brainer. But we can also condemn the bombing of hospitals and churches by the Israeli military. Violence is violence, and innocent lives are innocent lives, it is a no-brainer. It is never as easy as saying that one side is the hero and the other side is the villain. Without acknowledging the injustices, we will never be able to make progress. By denying the facts on the ground and by silencing the voice of our students and not considering their feelings, we make them feel marginalized. The, I, I understand, and I completely understand as, as educators, not everyone's equipped to handle such a complex topic. You heard from our sisters how complicated of an issue it really is. But what a teacher can do is make the students feel united, to create projects and posters to show how we're, we're advocating towards peace, to make them feel united against injustice. Burlington has always been about inclusivity, inclusivity. And I feel that after crisis, this is the time that we can shine as a beacon of hope for the world to demonstrate that we can look past our differences and come together on a united front. Nelson Mandela said, "Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world." Our Prophet Muhammad, peace be upon him, said, "Knowledge is only by learning." This is how we'll get to our goal, by learning and listening, and a way to pave towards the path of peace. I thank you.
Thank you so much for speaking. Is there anyone whose hand is raised on, um, the website? I don't see anybody. Do you, Mr. Kuna? Is there anyone else who's here tonight who would like to speak? Okay. I, I know other people are here tonight in support of the people who have spoken, and I want to acknowledge that. And I want to, again, thank everyone for coming to be sure, um, that, that your voice is heard and I... Dr. Conti, did you want to say something also?
Uh, sure, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank everyone who spoke this evening and everyone who, who's here in attendance. My gratitude is also to those who wrote to me directly and regarding your thoughts about my community letter. And I'd like to think that I'm a lifelong learner and I welcome your feedback, so I've heard you. This is tragic and politically polarized times, and across the nation we are seeing and hearing about acts of antisemitism and, and islamophobia. I just wanted to tell everyone that neither will be tolerated in this school district. While I have not had any incidents reported by me or to me by students or faculty, I want everyone to know that the school district strives to be a safe and inclusive learning environment for all of its members. To reiterate, islamophobia, antisemitism, and other forms of discrimination will not be tolerated. So I've heard you, I welcome your feedback, and I thank you for coming and sharing with that, with your feedback with me this evening.
Thank you. So, it's a little anticlimactic, but now I will move on to the next item in the agenda. And, uh, I, um, we have some reports, and we have a student presentation from the Students for Environmental Action, but I only see one of you here so far, so we'll go ahead with our reports. And everyone is welcome to stay to hear more about what we're doing, um, right now in the schools, so... Uh, oh, would you like to say something? Again, this isn't, public participation is not a dialogue, but if other people have something they want to say, um, I will, uh, give the floor to Ms. Monaco right now and anyone else who would like to.
I just want to say thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts with us. What's going on is, is really tough, and, um, it's nice to see all of you here tonight. And we appreciate your input, thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Ms. Bond?
Yeah, again, I really appreciate you all coming in and speaking to us and letting us know what your feelings are. And I'm happy that you all feel, um, you know, are proud to be a part of Burlington. We want to continue to make sure that we support you so you feel that way. I got a bit emotional listening to, um, what you were telling, because I can't imagine going through that from anywhere. It is, you know, we're very fortunate living where we do. And, um, again, thank you very much for coming forward.
All right. Okay, um, so now I will move on. I think our next item is our student report from our student representative, Matthew Shannon. If you care to take the floor.
Thank you, and I would just like to say that I also appreciate all of you coming up here and speaking on behalf of this issue. It is very complex, and I think that you all did a graceful job in presenting that to the school committee and to the people of Burlington, and I just wanted to applaud that. So, hi, everyone, I only have a few points to talk about tonight. Uh, first of all, DECA sent students to Fall State Leadership Conference last Friday at Bentley University, where they went through a bunch of workshops, learned how to be better leaders in their community, better leaders in the school. Uh, it was pretty fun, and I know that students were able to connect with other students across the state. MODO UN is sending students to UMass Lowell for their first interscholastic conference. Uh, they were preparing during our flex block, and I, we are pretty promising, uh, is what I like to say. And, uh, our English department is holding a flex block to talk about, uh, more media stuff and how to be like, uh, take English ideas into the media that we're currently seeing. So they held one about a famous show, and they're going to hold one on the Barbie movie and talk about feminism in literature, which I think is pretty cool. Uh, the South Asian Student Association is holding a Garba night on this Friday, October 27th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Marshall Simons Middle School. From what I know, it's a very fun celebration, and there's a lot of dancing. My friends have already attended a few other places, and they all have blisters on the feet because they just dance all night, and it's really fun. I hope to see people there. Uh, and that's pretty much it, just seniors are coming to the ends of college application season, or at least for early deadlines, but, I don't know, people are working hard, and I applaud all of you who have been applying and working hard. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to add something, Dr. Chen? No? Okay. And I, I understand you're helping out with the girls' volleyball team, do you have any updates for us?
Um, we've been pretty good, we're pretty good. I think that our team is going to be making a good run in the state tournament. And I know a lot of the other sports teams are finding a lot of success. Cross Country had another meet today, I'm pretty sure they won again.
Good.
But yeah.
Good, thank you. Dr. Conti, any comments? No? Okay. All right, um, the next item is subcommittee reports. So does anyone have a subcommittee that's met and have a report? No? Okay, and Mr. Moran, who's here from Ways and Means, uh, let me know, he doesn't have a report tonight?
No report tonight.
Okay, thank you. And are there other announcements that are just under announcements? No? Okay? All right, I think, um, other kinds of announcements, when we get to our Journey to Cares update, we get to hear about a lot of things that are going on in the district, so I'm going to not make announcements about things that I'm pretty sure Dr. Chen's going to talk about later. So, um, how are we doing on the Students for Environmental Action? Are they all here yet? No? Okay, so we're going to move on. Dr. Conti, to our section on learning, equity, and thriving with the MCAS review and stu- Actually, is that, is that supposed to be MSMS?
No, it's, it's, uh, again, I think MCAS was, was listed twice, so, um, if, if, Madam Chair, if, um, you could go to just the first part, the second part of the agenda item, which is the student handbook in your packet. Marshall Simons Middle School, Dr. Purchase sent a section of the handbook that she's looking to have immediate approval on. That's reflects the same changes that you made in the high school handbook that are adjustments that the state has made to the Code of Conduct and Discipline laws. Dr. Purchase is working on the rest of her handbook, and we'll be getting you a complete handbook later on in the year, but we just want to make sure the, the Code of Conduct reflects the changes that have been made at the state level. So, again, I just would like you to, um, again, it's the same language, you've already approved for the high school handbook, we just need to make sure it gets included in the middle school handbook.
Okay. Is there any comment or questions or conversation on the, this update for the legal student discipline and, and code of conduct? No? Okay, so then I would entertain a motion to accept this change as presented by Dr. Purchase. Still moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, and the Chair votes aye, so that's five, zero, zero. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. We can certainly start the MCAS presentation, but it's going to be, um, it's very detailed, and if the students come in, Ms. Simon, and we're at a breaking point, we can certainly get right to the students if you wanted, if you'd like to do that.
That would be okay, although what if we did the Journey to Cares? Well, we still have people who haven't heard that report lately, and then maybe if, we can do that afterward. Does that sound?
I think that's a better choice.
Okay.
So, okay, so with that. So with that, Dr. Chen, we'll put you on to a Journey to Cares.
All right. Well, thank you very much for letting me be able to present what has been going on. So in the first couple of slides, you'll see some pictures, and I will narrate through these pictures of everything that's been accomplished. And what I hope to do is to give all of you kind of some information as to what's going on in the instructional team and what's always behind the scenes. So as part of the instructional team leadership, we, there was an ILT meeting that we went to to Burlington High School to talk more about the supervision and evaluation process. We've also had SCL night at Francis Wyman and Moss Knuckle, the director, sorry, of the middle school. The director of mental health shared with parents and caregivers about the SCL curriculum in both the elementary schools and middle schools. We also attended, some of us, the Happy Diwali event. That was spectacular. We've worked with district mentors to discuss next year's programs for new teachers. We've hosted Keys to Literacy Professional Development event for teachers in reading comprehension and writing. And in that first group of pictures, if you go back just previously, you'll see that both the superintendent and I attended the principal of the day at Francis Wyman Elementary School, in which one of the students was the principal, another student was the assistant principal, and both, I heard, were excellent at their job, and they could invite friends. Now, I also noticed, made a quick observation, that there were no gentlemen there, of which they said, "No, Mr. D is a gentleman. He's the only boy that got invited." Okay. So it was a wonderful event that we attended, and that in the next couple of slides, you'll see that we hosted a professional development also for the math specialists. Additionally, the instructional team, the BH council team, as we know, recently they hosted a dual enrollment parent breakfast. And this was very informative for a lot of the grade nine parents and caregivers on wanting to know more about dual enrollment that comes, that goes on in our particular school system. We've worked with Dr. Lupini, who was the former superintendent of Brookline, sorry, he's an outside consultant who's helping us plan professional development on supervision and evaluation. We also, in the third slide, attended the annual MasQ event at the Gillette Stadium. The members of the digital learning team presented at MasQ about BPS, Computer Science for All, Near Pod, and Accessibility Features of the iPad. And the digital learning coaches are also teaching computer science lessons for grades pre-K through five. Next, also, we visited three elementary schools for grade level meetings to discuss changes recommended in the science scope and sequence. I want to really thank a member, Sean Musselman, out there, who is sitting out there, who has helped to do that work, with Wendy as well, too. Thank you very much, sir. They led kindergarten nature walks, classroom pet lessons, creepy crawler animal kindergarten lessons, co-taught fourth graders on plant structure and function lessons. They also presented at Pine Glen staff about the new science innovative, on the new science innovative assessment of MCAS. They recently visit, also, the math department visited two elementary schools during common planning time to discuss new features and envision math and revise tips, problem-solving steps. We've looked at all universal screenings in math for grades one through five in all four elementary schools to make decisions about interventions. Also, the instructional team has met with all grade levels at each elementary school to discuss English updates, including the science of reading research. We've worked on updating our screeners to build the capacity of science of readers. We trained grade two teachers in DIBELS and the Amplify Systems. And then finally, I would say in the, one of the last slides that we have in the instructional team, we've adult ESL classes. We began four levels, around 40 students attending the fall sessions. We had the LPAC meeting, around 50 families attended, and staff and administration want to thank Dr. Conti for being there, and also Martha Simons for also being there. And we recently have a new ESL teacher who's working in the BECC, supporting students and families, and many are rolling from extended stay. Also, if you go to, you're going to want to cut through all the slides to go to our last slide in instructional team. Thank you very much. The one with the picture about hosting the parent guardian school, and so, excellent, sir. A social-emotional curriculum nights, pre-K through five at the middle school. We also attended three elementary meetings and a BECC staff meeting, discuss Wayfinder, that is the director of mental health, that happens to be Chrissy Concepcion. She also supported student social-emotional learning, behavioral mental health and wellness through multi-tiered systems of supports. And her and her team, they got a grant of $40,000 and 950 cents. The next, with the instructional team, also, four elementary social workers, adjustment counselors, worked in trials, a wellness tier-two group. We've also implemented the FALDSSA social-emotional assessment for grades K through eight. At Francis Wyman, the counseling team, they also divulled clothing and other supplies to families in need. Alan Bloom has started the PD for regular education teachers who signed up about special education laws, regulations, and IP process. And Chris Monaco, I want to point out, the OG practicums have started, and we have 13 special education teachers who are in their second years of OG training and certification. Okay, that is rolling on. OG, Orton Gilliam. It is, it's to help our readers who are learning how to read. Okay, that's moving on, ma'am. And I'm sorry, so Orton Gilliam, yes, sir. In our business and finance team, we wrote, advertised, and conducted a request of services, procurement for BHS building projects. We wrote and finalized projects. Nicole attended Health Insurance Advisory Committee. We attended the Mass Association of School Business Officials for Professional Development on looking on updates of grants, budgeting, and other school finance topics. And we processed student financial assistance application and issued determination letters for parents and guardians. Next, in the communication team, we continue to update the website on the recent Equity Assessment Report. We worked with the middle school in Francis Wyman to send prior paper communication of after-school clubs through Parent Square. We met with the Food Service Department to update website content that's no longer accessible. And we worked, attended, she attended the Marshall Simon-Moral Pine Glen staff meetings to answer staff questions and assist the educational tech team in presentations about the Parent Square. Also, we know that Parent Square is working very well, and I thought about you, Jeremy Brooks, because you love data. We have over 2,000 users that are going on in Parent Square, so it is moving along very nicely, sir.
I love it, and the texts we get all day long is good, because I don't miss a lot of things now.
Yes, sir. And it's translated easily in all of our languages. That's one of the great things about Parent Square, and that's why we went to it. In the Human Resource Department, we offered a force weeks step-it-up walking challenge for all staff. We've got to keep our staff emotionally, physically healthy. Team EMTS, the middle school, is topping the leaderboard. So to you elementary people and to you high school staff, you've got to beat the middle school people. They attended the town's Health Insurance Advisory Committee meeting to review health claims data and prepare for open enrollment. We've assisted in the benefits administrator in conducting the annual Employee Health and Benefit Fair. And we also, and that team also attended the Human Resource Association Fall Conference to learn more about current legislative updates, collective bargaining, recruitments, and embracing transgender and non-binary employees. With the nursing team, there's been much collaboration and work with the Board of Health. And again, really want to thank the Board of Health. For the three days of the immunization clinic, there were 151 immunizations to 38 students. And these are students that we wanted to get into our school system, because there is a state law that if you are not immunized, you cannot attend school within a certain amount of time, but we want all of our students to be here at our schools. We will hold a vaccination clinic on 12/1, because this is, I learned, and I learned this, that students can only take so many immunizations, and so there are some students who have come here, new to this country, who need all of their vaccinations, and you can only give so much vaccination, so they need to have five more vaccinations. We didn't want to give them all to them at the same time, so we're opening another vaccination clinic. And on 11/13, we're holding a vaccination clinic at Francis Wyman for all of our elementary kids who need to be vaccinated. On a November 20th, we held one at the middle school for all of our middle school students who need to be vaccinated. Again, we really want to thank the partnership with the Board of Health. This is Susan Liminelli. We want to thank our nurses, Rosie Pasquale, Susan Shields, Jessica Roy, Caitlin Gilbert. Want to thank Carrie Lamprey, who is our Director of ESOL Education, Principal Mark Sullivan, the director, who is the Director Joe Adabato, who works with the Guidance Department team, and our nearest leader Barbara Conley, because indeed, it takes a community of people all working together to ensure that we can get every single child to start attending our schools as soon as possible. We're also designing a due process to remove all family barriers to meet medical needs of students and their families. We want to thank very much Dr. Conti, who is, who on the side is also an Uber driver who picks up families, he really does, to make sure that they get their immunizations. And we are also working with Alliance Club to make sure that all of our children get free vision care, who need vision care. And we also coordinated training with the nursing department on parents scared to better connect with families. And vision hearing and the BMI screenings were completed at Memorial, and thus far, there are 877 screenings done at Memorial. Next slide, please. In this slide, as another partnership to ensure that we try and get all of our students immunized as quickly as possible, we try to really establish clinics also with our outside partners. One is with Wuburn. And here's a picture of both Rosemary De Souza, who works in the instructional team, and also Nellie Alangji, who also works in Wuburn. This is the Welcome Alliance Clinic that's opened up for two years now. We have thus immunized 17 students with 63 shots. And again, I really want to thank, really, the work of Dr. Conti and also the superintendent for bringing us this grant here and for also supporting. And I know that recently, Dr. Conti has been talking to Wuburn Pediatrics, because one of the issues that we are now coming up is, now that we've gotten our students immunized, now what? How do we continue to help with their healthcare and medical and everything like that? There's been some coordinated scheduled vision, hearing, BMI, and postural screenings for all schools. We've coordinated to ensure that there are the right types of screening dates at the middle school and the high school. The nursing department has provided 5,135 students and 26, have seen 26 staff in the month of September, and we have submitted, and we were given a grant budget of $40,000, and it was approved by the Mass Department of Health. So that's what's going on with our nursing team. Now, for our operations team. This is so exciting, and this is such a beautiful picture, and long awaited for Francis Wyman. So next, please. This is going to be the new playground at Francis Wyman, expected to be complete next Friday on October 27th, and I know that many, many children are very excited about this, and this is a very beautiful playground. So thank you so much, Bob Kuna, for making this happen, and all of your team, and those working on the side, and also Jeremy Brooks for working alongside this, and also helping, you know, with all the committees necessary to push this further along. The flagpole was installed at Marshall Simons near the turf field. The fire inspections, elevator inspections, and general inspections have been completed. We have a notice to proceed, issued a contractor for a new intercom system at Francis Wyman. There's a compost meeting held with students, in which we'll hear later on from the students about compost. And we've met with onsite engineering firm to help develop plans for accessible walkways at both Marshall Simons and Francis Wyman. Now, our technology team, they continue to meet all technology requirements. They attended the Massachusetts Municipal Cybersecurity Summit in Worcester and the MasQ in Foxborough. We're revising, preparing for our first cybersecurity assessment and assignment on cybersecurity training reports for the superintendent. And this is just to make sure that we continue to be very protected against phishing, against viruses, because that really can damage our system. So very grateful to Jose De Souza for getting this grant, being the first of one of the many in the state to really, you know, project this forward and to give us the training that are necessary. So thank you to the technology director and also to his team. I know that they also assisted the elementary, middle school, and high school staff with support to parents, guardians, whose first language is not English at the back-to-school nights. We use Lexiket to ensure that translations could be heard online during the same time. Really want to thank also Rosemary De Souza. Want to thank, again, the technology team, and also Carrie Lamprey for hosting such a wonderful event to make it inclusive for everyone. And then we're installing additional cameras at the middle school. I know that they're working on that right now and getting that done. And finally, just want to share with you, I know I went through this really quickly, but here, again, is the reason why we do everything that we do. And here's a wonderful picture of all of our kids. They're learning Computer Science for All, and this is starting early on, so it can transition, because we know how important computer science now is today. It's almost another language. So if our kids can get access to that language early on, and it's a wonderful district initiative that's happening all the way from pre-K through 12, our students are learning more about how to code and more about computer science, and this is what it's all about. BPS cares. We are one team, one family, and we thank you always for your support.
Thank you, Dr. Chen. I love to hear about all the things that are going on. This is something that we don't see, a lot of it, so it's really important to know how wonderful our staff are and how many things they're doing. So thank you for bringing that to our attention every meeting. Appreciate it. So shall we move on to our presentation by the students from the Environmental Action Committee? All right, come on up, please. All right, excellent. Do, yeah, would you come sit there, make sure the green light's on? And is your presentation, did we share, do you have it, can you email it to Mr. Kuna? Is that, can you put it up for us, Mr. Kuna, if she does that? Yeah? Sure, sure. So while you're getting it ready, I've been talking to the Students for Environmental Action for about five or six years, and I've been talking with Dr. Conti for that long about how we might get composting at, in the Burlington Public Schools. And the Students for Environmental Action are real excited to help make this happen. I want to clarify that we're not going to build a compost pile in the backyard. That's not what we're going to be doing, but we are going to hire a company that will come pick up the compost with all the approvals going through. So they will give you a little bit of background on that. Ah-ha, yes. Okay, well, why don't you tell us what you were?
I'm ready now.
All right.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yep.
Dr. Chen, I just wanted to comment on the computer programming. My daughters really liked the robot computer program event. I came home and were raving about being able to program a robot and make it go down the hallway, so it's definitely working well.
Are there any other comments on the Cares report while we're waiting for the technology to catch up with us?
Madam Chair, I attended the MasQ presentation, and I think there were 50 or 60 other educators from across the Commonwealth who attended, so I think they're very interested. And the focus was only in our pre-K to five computer science program. We didn't even get to the middle or high school. So there are a lot of people who are very interested and wanting to share in the curriculum that our staff has developed. So it was a very popular session.
So our staff presented at the MasQ conference, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
And other people from around the state came to learn from us how we're doing it.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. And Ms. Monaco, well, Ms. Bond had a comment, too.
No, I was just going to say, I really enjoy your Cares reports every week. I think that a lot of people don't realize how much goes on in the background, aside from teaching and, you know, just the, I don't know. I think it's great to let the community know how much other stuff is going on in the background.
And Ms. Monaco, did you have some?
She stole my comment. But, but I also want to say, I don't know how you manage to get so much done and so much into the presentation, and you're so quick. It's great. Thank you.
All right, so status update. Oh, Dr. Conti, something else? Go ahead.
No, I think- No, I think while we're waiting. I think we must be close.
Shafali?
All right, so we're close, here we go.
You're good, or we're almost ready? Okay. All right. Maybe, and once it goes through, maybe then you can introduce yourselves, okay? There we go. Excellent, thank you. Yeah. You got to speak.
All right, can you hear me? My name is Shafali Bakre. I'm a current senior at Burlington High School, and I'm the President of the Students for Environmental Action Club.
My name is Kira Riley. Last year, I was enrolled in AP Environmental Science, where we did a lot of work with composting. So Shafali and I have been kind of working together to try and get this initiative going.
So in the Students for Environmental Action Club, we spend club meeting time to create this slideshow about like why we want composting to happen at BHS. This has actually been an initiative that the club has started since around like 2019. And each year, we've been trying to just talk about this to our clubs, spread awareness, and hope that we can enact composting in our schools. So we're really, really passionate about this. If you can go to the next slide.
So here, as I previously mentioned, we've been working with Ms. Simon. So here are just a few important statistics. These just show why it is so important for us to compost. For example, the first one, twenty-five percent of the Massachusetts waste stream is food waste. And then the very last statistic is that our landfills are filling up. So again, just to reiterate, these points show why it is so important for us to compost and why it is so important to implement such a system into the Burlington Public Schools.
So what is composting? If you have not heard of it, it basically takes like food scraps, leaves, organic matter, and then turns it into fertilizer, which can enrich our plants, our soil, our nutrients. Also, in our landfills, a lot of the food waste develops methane into our atmosphere and into our grounds. So if we enact composting, we can take a part in removing this methane from our atmosphere and creating an eco, more eco-friendly environment.
Here we just have some of the benefits of composting. It enriches our soil. Some of these are repeating what Shafali just mentioned, but it helps retain moisture. It reduces the need for fertilizers, and it reduces landfill waste. As I previously mentioned, our landfills are filling up. So composting can help us keep those landfills from filling up even more than they already have.
And then, so for how we can implement composting in BHS, we had a meeting with Dr. Conti and Mr. Kuna, where we discussed if we did enact composting, how are we going to engage with the high school? So we proposed an idea that the Environmental Action Club can become student leaders. We can create fun educational videos to share across the school to teach them how to compost and why we should compost. Also, we can create posters, spread it across the school, speak on the daily announcements on like composting is coming up next month, like be ready for it. And during lunch, we can stand near the composting bins and help our peers just know like, oh, put your milk carton in this bin, put your food scraps in this bin. And as like the months and weeks go by, the students will like know how to compost and how beneficial it is for our society.
Again, this is kind of just reiterating what Shafali mentioned. But in order for composting to be successful, the students have to be aware of what is going on. It's important for everyone to understand the benefits of composting and how it can be harmful if you don't do it properly. As she previously mentioned, there are a lot of different ways to spread awareness, such as posters, videos, over the morning announcements, and then sharing on social media.
And then, this is just a company we were planning on working with, Black Earth, just a link to it. And Black Earth also helps spread awareness in our schools, and they will also support us through this, because they've worked with schools like Lexington, I believe, and a lot of schools around here. So they have experience working with basically the schools, yeah.
And then, here, we just talk about how we can offer updates on how composting is benefiting us, the money, and then how much waste we are saving from going and entering landfills. So we ask for.
Is there one, is there one more slide? No, okay.
So we ask for your support in helping us implement this composting system into the Burlington Public Schools.
That's great. Dr. Conti?
Thank you. This was really certainly something that we've been talking about for a while. Ms. Simon has been asking, this was a pre-pandemic effort that was sidetracked a little bit once we had to make adjustments. Black Earth is a company, and so, Mr. Kuna, you also are part of this process and, again, working with the students, and we got some prices. We did check with Ms. Kasha, who is also online. You all know we have the cafeteria revolving account, and there's a balance in that revolving account. We asked Ms. Kasha if composting would be considered part of food service expense. And in her interpretation with her conversation, she believes that it is, it qualifies as a food service expense, or it would be appropriate to use those resources to help minimize the waste that is coming out of the cafeteria through composting. So Bob, you got some different prices for the committee, and what we talked about is starting small. And so Bob will talk about some efforts to where we start. And then the students, we talked about maybe moving forward to have students participate closer to January at the semester change, when students have a chance to work with their classmates and do some advertising. So Bob, how about some, the information that you explored for us?
Okay. First, I want to say that thank you to the team to having this conversation with us, and obviously, thank you to Martha for continuing to stay on top of this conversation. Black Earth is not the only company, but one of the reasons that we like them is because they're also supporting Burlington as a town in general. So they're in this community. When looking at composting previously, some of the holdups were that these companies weren't really supporting our town, which was driving the costs up. With Black Earth being in town, it puts it at an economical price for us. That being said, it does come at a cost. This is not a free service. It's approximately twenty to twenty-five dollars per bin, right? So that's a standard toter that you would have, let's say, for recycling, about a sixty-four gallon toter. These would have a rubber seal on them and a biodegradable bag inside. So then, there's a typical pickup of about once a week, and that's where that price comes from. Obviously, more toters, the price goes down, and then if you want to have more pickups per week, then the price will go up. The reason I say the price goes down is that, let's say, it's twenty-five dollars for a single barrel. As you add more barrels, since they're coming anyways to the same location, the prices get cheaper per barrel. Obviously, you'll spend a little bit more money because you're adding volume. That being said, this year, we're looking at approximately about a six thousand to eight thousand dollar range. And the reason there's an approximation is that what we're proposing is starting off in the kitchens only, right? And when I say only in the kitchens, behind the scenes are cafeteria services are prepping the meals. So any waste right now is not being composted. So what we'd like to do is start with at least one toter in each of the kitchens, six kitchens, and get some of that waste started in the back of the house to be composted. As we increase volume and increase knowledge and awareness in our kitchens, then we'd like to move out into the cafeterias themselves with the help of the environmental team and spread awareness to make sure that we can then start composting on a larger scale. So again, starting a little bit small, one toter in each kitchen, and then growing it at a steady pace, but a pace that we can stay fit on to make sure that it's not too much at once, and we don't have all these empty toters sitting around. So we'll have to watch that grow at a timely manner.
The school we'd like to start with is obviously the high school. And then, if that goes well, we could certainly have the high school students either later this spring go down to the middle school to introduce the topic. And then, again, it would be about making sure that we work with students at all levels. I know that there are, at the elementary schools, when we eventually get there, there are units on trash and recycling and composting that are part of our elementary science curriculum that we can certainly incorporate into our student cafeteria behavior. So again, so our plan that we'd like you to support is starting in our kitchens and then expanding to the high school cafeteria with the help of our environmental student teams, and then exploring, looking at moving down to the middle school and then eventually to the elementary schools as we move forward. And again, the cost, Bob, you're estimating to be six to eight thousand dollars, and we feel we can very easily and safely support that in the revolving account for the, that with the money that we have already in the cafeteria revolving account.
Okay, any comments? Yes, Mr. Brooks? Oh, Ms. Sardo?
Sure. Does it save any money on trash, too, that it offsets? Like if we reduce, or is the trash more of a fixed, like the regular? If it's twenty-five percent, like say we save ten percent on trash?
It could in the long run.
Yeah.
So right now, we have a standard pickup time. So at the high school, let's say, they pick up three times a week.
Okay.
Regardless if the barrel's full or not.
Okay. So not, so not an immediate?
Not, not immediate, no.
Okay. Second is just more of a comment. When we toured the Maria Hastings in Lexington, we did see two lunch periods, and that's an elementary school. And they did have parent volunteers there watching and helping the kids. So it absolutely can be done at the elementary level. I think we would need to provide more support. I think it's a great idea to start here. Obviously, the quantity is going to be the largest here anyway. I think you, I saw the data on the lunches, they, we serve more lunch, the most lunches here. So that's really exciting. Thank you for coming.
If I could add, in my understanding of would we save money? It, our, what the town pays for tipping fees for trash is by the ton, and since food waste is very heavy, and we'd be removing the liquids, at least in that level. It may not save on a line item in the school budget, but it should be saved. I can't give you numbers and percentages, but it would, it certainly would be saving the town some money to remove the food waste. So, yes, Mr. Brooks?
So I'm just going to preface this statement with, I definitely support this. I just wouldn't be me if I wasn't a stickler on a few things. You said you, Nicole believes it is an expense we can pull out of the revolving account. Did council weigh in on that? Do we need to do that? And then, to Bob, do we know what the fully burdened cost is when we go to full scale? And can we support that through the revolving account? Or do we anticipate that being something we can afford without too much adjustment?
I can answer that. Council was not involved in this. I think Nicole felt very comfortable with the expense. And I don't know the, what the full-blown cost would be. I'm assuming the cost per tote would, we would just have to scale it up depending on how many schools, schools we're in?
Yeah, some projections right now, based on calculations of number of users, how many lunches are served, gets us up to about eighteen to nineteen thousand per year if we go full scale. So that would be somewhere approximately eight or nine toters full at the high school, one pickup a week. Middle school would be somewhere around six. Again, plus or minus, but also building up to that.
True.
So I don't know that we would be at that full scale this year, but potentially, you know, growing into that.
Yeah, just trying to understand that. So we, the revolving count basically has capacity to do that as we get to a full burden for that. Cool, thanks.
Ms. Monaco?
These questions are really for Bob. Just, I, what grades are you? What level are you at? I know you said so, and I.
We're both seniors.
You're both seniors?
Yes.
Bob, are you planning to start only with the high school or with all the kitchens together?
I would like to start with all kitchens. Now, again, depending on, let's say, we do sign a contract with Black Earth, if they can deliver all six at once, or if there's any delay, which I'm not aware of, I would say that we would be starting with six toters, one per kitchen.
Okay, let's say Monday morning, you have a brand-new toter, it's empty. And it's picked up once a week, so maybe Friday after school. Where does it sit with all of the food waste in it for that week?
Good question. So obviously, each kitchen's going to be a little bit different. The way the process would work, let's say, with Black Earth, is that once we design a schedule for pickup, could be Friday, could be Wednesday, they have business hours, so it would probably be not after school, but maybe closer to in the morning. That being said, the toter itself is not exactly a typical recycling toter. So it has a rubber seal on the top, and it has a biodegradable bag on the inside. So it would sit in-house, so either in the back of the kitchen or somewhere concentric to flow of the kitchen.
So it would be inside?
It'd be inside in the kitchen, yes.
And I don't have any experience with this, so I'm just, you know, kind of thinking about it and wondering, is there a smell? Are the cafeteria workers going to be annoyed by having a lot of garbage around all week? Will they notice it?
So again, I think it depends on our flow and our volume. So if we see that there is a large volume, and we see that the compost is breaking down rather quickly, then we can up the pickups. But again, if we're having a low volume and we're not necessarily seeing materials that are breaking down as quickly, the company's recommending weekly as a starting point. So we're using that recommendation as our starting point.
If it were just cost more.
Exactly.
And have you gotten any input from the cafeteria staff that would have to be actually using?
I have got minimal impact, input. So I have spoke to some cafeteria staff. I've spoke to the cafeteria food services management team. And again, we think that we feel comfortable with the fact that we're already preparing the food right now, and we're already getting rid of that waste. Now, if we can just get rid of that waste in a more environmental-friendly way, we think the impact is minimal in the kitchen, but beneficial in the long run.
But how do they feel about it? Are they willing to try it? Are they, you know, are they objecting?
So I'm not really hearing full objections, but we need to work on the logistics. So again, with one toter, let's say, in a kitchen like the high school, it's larger, so we have to look at individual stations. So one of the things we talked about is maybe providing some small location buckets, like maybe a five-gallon bucket. And again, this hasn't been finalized yet. But if it makes sense to have a five-gallon bucket at a workstation, then to clear that and empty it, that may be one of the logistical tasks that we need to work out. But it also may benefit to having a second toter in that area, just strategically placed to make sure that we're getting a good workflow.
So I support this, but I think that we have to be careful to get feedback from the people that actually have to use it on a daily basis. And we need to find out if it's working, if they're comfortable with it, if there are problems, you know. I just want to make sure that there's follow-up, and if there are any difficulties or if we need to have it picked up more often, whatever we need to do, that we, that we stay on it.
Madam Chair?
Dr. Conti?
Just a couple of things. I think I was at the, one of the meetings that Bob attended with the cafeteria workers, and they were certainly willing to try it. They said, we're throwing out stuff anyway. If we just have to throw it in a different location, they were willing to give it a shot. I do think it's a workflow issue and sort of how close by the totes are, and we'll work on that. Bob, the company also, as part of their pickup, they take the bag and they also wash out the bin. Is that correct? So.
Correct, yes.
So they're not putting back, they're cleaning the bin before it goes back in, inside, so.
Where do they take the bin to clean it?
Outside. So as part of our process, somebody in our staff will need to get that toter, just like our recycling bin, outside the doors or to the curb.
Oh, I see.
Then they'll come and do a pickup. They have a self-contained truck with a washing unit on it. unit on it. They'll pull the bag out, clean the, the toter, replace it with a new bag, and then it'll come back into the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. I know, yep. So again, initially, we're using the revolving account. How are we going to continue though, year after year after year? Are we going to, how's them, are we going to pay for it after that? Continue the revolving account?
Again, I would sort of want to see how it works and the true cost. I think we're estimating now. But the revolving account would certainly have enough capacity to handle twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar expense. And in fact, we probably have to spend down some of the revolving account anyway to sort of, I think we're only allowed to keep a two or three month balance in the revolving account. So we have to upgrade some equipment. We have to have some other, other expenses. And again, I feel this would be an appropriate expense also to, to have in the, in the revolving account. And it's not new. So this isn't something that we're leaning on. I think there are many other districts that do this and do this particularly well. And I think it should be a cost of us feeding our students should be a cost. Composting should just be a sort of a part of that cost.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks?
Sorry, two alibis. One, I guess I wanted to ask the presenters, is there a target threshold you'd like to see over the first, you know, three months, six months to the first year that you're trying to achieve, you know, to measure success for your projects, you know, as you close it out? Hey, we're successful because we did X. Is there any kind of metric you guys are striving for?
Hello. I feel like for, because if we're starting this in January, so the second semester, I feel like if even by like June, if like more than half, like seventy percent of like the high schoolers begin to compost or just learn about composting, that's a huge stride in just, just those few months. And I feel like continuing on like for next year as well, like even though we won't be here, I hope that the next generation like continues doing this, like throughout the school districts as well.
True. And then I guess the last question would be, are there any grants available? Because we're doing this, this is a sustainable thing. This is very ecological, ecologically friendly. Are there grants out there that could help offset some costs and, you know, defray that that we know of? Or maybe take that back as part of the project to maybe see if there's something out there we could apply for?
I would encourage, ask, maybe Mr. Kuna and Ms. Kasha could look into whether there are grants available. You know, I, I do, I do want to, I'm going to, I'd like to say, I think all of your questions, Ms. Monaco, are really the details of how is this going to actually work. And I think Dr. Conti's point is well taken. There's a, a number of school districts that are already doing this and it's working. And their districts have been doing it for several years. And it is, it's really important to make sure that the cafeteria staff feel they can understand it, what's going on, our custodians as well. Although I actually, I think, in Arlington, I spoke to the people in Arlington, and they said that the custodians are actually really happy because the food waste is now out of the trash. So other trash doesn't smell as much and the trash isn't as heavy and that kind of thing. Cause what, we didn't give all of the details, but like one of the things that people do when they compost is you pour the liquids out first and then you put the food trash into the bin. And, and like you said, Mr. Kuna, that, you know, when I spoke with the cafeteria workers at the high school, they were actually like, of course, yeah, of course we could do that. We have to throw it in a bin somewhere. And, and we had Gretchen Carey, who's quite an expert on this, who was pointing out that there are certain types of like narrow bins you can get that will be specialized to fit where it's going to be easy. It's not like the cafeteria workers have to chop up items and take them somewhere to put into the compost bin. They'll, they'll have something, you know, where they're, they're working. So I, I, I trust that between Mr. Kuna and the food service company and the cafeteria people, they'll be able to figure out something. The other thing in terms of smell, I have, I've been doing composting at my home. And the town is now actually encouraging folks to do it through the Black Earth program. So anybody who wants to try doing it at home can look on the website of the town. And it, it's where I take a little bin that doesn't get very smelly and I throw it into the bin outside. You know, the, in this case, my bin isn't a sixty-four gallon totter. But the sixty-four gallon totter is the reason that Mr. Kuna mentioned, it's a rubber seal, is because when you close it, I can go past my compost bin all, you know, all summer after a whole week and it doesn't smell when it's closed. You know, so there's a lot of little details that we do need to make sure we get right. But I'm, I'm pretty convinced that our staff will find a way to do it and that Mr. Kuna is pretty responsive. And if there are problems, that we'll figure out a way to, to work them out. And, you know, with the student support, I think that's going to go a long way. I'm really, you know, it's, January seems like far away, but it's actually getting near the end of October. So just a couple of months to work on the education campaign and maybe the cafeteria workers after they get into the flow, if you, if they would like to add to, you know, how it's working, that could be part of it as well. So we really appreciate the time and work that you're putting into this and look forward to hearing more about the, the campaign then. It sounds like we have support. And I, Dr. Conti, I think you need a vote. Is that correct?
Yeah, I just would like a motion to begin our composting project with our, as presented by the students, using the cafeteria revolving account. And the vote is really about using the revolving account for this expense.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, and the chair votes aye. So that's five zero zero. Thank you very much. Please report back to the Students for Environmental Action. That we appreciate their support.
Yay. Thank you so much, guys. Really appreciate it.
Thank you all for your time.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Nice job.
Yep. Great. All right.
Now, if you could get rid of the plastic that Woodson's is using?
It's, yeah. It's, you want to comment? I mean, the composting, as Ms. Monaco just mentioned, is related to other issues. We have, we're using a lot of plastic in the cafeterias. So we, we also have other issues that we could be looking at. And one of the things that will happen with the composting is that the trays will become compost, will, will be using compostable trays. And so that will reduce a certain amount of the plastics and trash that we're using for that. But plastics is definitely another one. Maybe we can work on that and bring some proposal. Thank you. So Dr. Conti, we have an exciting report on MCAS?
Uh, we, we do.
All right.
Dr. Chen's been working with her team. And so we know some of this isn't always so exciting, but you have to understand that Dr. Chen and I really find this exciting. So, so we'll, we'll try to-
Share your excitement.
Well, again, we'll, we'll try to keep it as engaging as, as we can.
And I want to welcome Robin Milliano up our, what is your title? Student Information? Director of Student Information. Thank you for joining us today. There's a lot of data goes in here and you take care of our data really well. Thank you.
So I just wanted to start because we have been out of the accountability system for several years because of the pandemic. It was suspended. This year was really our first one. When we're looking at year-to-year comparisons, they're really telling us to look at 2019 potentially as the, as the last year. So the data's not going to be perfect. MCAS or the data from MCAS is often misused. And so I just wanted to do, I'm not a psychometrician, but I just wanted to give everyone a really super fast explanation of the difference between a norm reference test and a criterion reference test. So they're, they're designed to answer two different questions. So if you want to ask the question, how does my twelve-year-old compared to twelve-year-olds across a population, across the state, across the country, that's a norm reference test. So that's, that's how you, what you do to answer that question. MCAS is not a norm reference test. SAT, for instance, is a norm reference test. MCAS is what's called a criterion reference test. A criterion reference test is how does my child, my student, my twelve-year-old perform on an assessment of an identified body of knowledge. So that's sort of what the Massachusetts state standards are. So you have standards and what a criterion reference test is used is to measure how students perform on their knowledge of that content. Oftentimes, I think people conflate the two and they'll use MCAS in the same manner as a norm reference test. And there are some qualities that are the same, but it's really not a tool that's designed to do that. So we always say it'd be like taking your temperature with a yardstick. It just doesn't work. Comparing community to community using MCAS scores is not what this test is designed for. I know it makes for great press, but it's not there. The reason I have a mountain on there is if you think of this body of knowledge as a mountain, the reason I like that image is MCAS measures where on the mountain that student is. And obviously, where the student starts makes a big difference. If they start at the bottom of the mountain and they make a year and a half's worth of progress up the mountain, that's a tremendous year for that student and those teachers. The student could still not perform very well on the criterion, on the standards-based test, but they had a tremendous year and that was a tremendous teaching effort that went into that. If the student walks into the year and is, walks in at the top of the mountain, comes in and takes the test and shows that they're at the top of the mountain, you know, maybe the student didn't grow a whole lot, but that's, that's sort of the measure that's there. So again, MCAS is a criterion reference test. It's important. It shows us, shows the state really, that we are implementing state standards. It's more about the standards from my perspective. It's really not an instructional tool that we use. We get the results too late. These results that we're explaining are for last year. We have other assessments that teachers use and that we use to shape instruction. This is not one of them. And again, I think some of the comparisons that Globe uses and other people mention, it's really not what the test is designed for. So Dr. Chen is going to go through our results and talk about how sort of we use the data. We're not going to get into all of the details or the level of detail that we are using. But I'm hoping that we'll answer some of your questions. We'll introduce some, some data. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Chen.
All right. So what Dr. Conti was saying was exactly spot on, that this is a criterion reference test as opposed to a norm reference test. But there are two areas that now with the next generation tests that we take a look at. One is the achievement data and the other one is the student growth data. And we're going to play a video for you that the Department of Education had put out. It's the next slide, please. And, but before that video is played, what I want to explain is some of the scores that they used when it was the ranking of two twenty isn't what the scores are now with the next generation. The scaled scores are now from about four forty to five sixty. So you'll see some numbers around two twenty that was in the previous last testing. But they do a very nice job in this short video of explaining the difference between the student growth percentile versus achievement.
The student growth percentile, the SGP, to describe students' performance on MCAS tests. This video will explain how the SGP is calculated for any group of students. For example, a district, a school, a grade, or a classroom. The SGP measures growth by comparing a student's MCAS score from one year to the next. The purpose of the SGP is to determine whether the amount of growth is enough. Here's how the SGP is calculated. Let's look at one school in Massachusetts. Within that school, focus on one class, Joe Schmo's seventh grade math class. Each student in this class has MCAS scores in math from the previous two years, grades five and six. These students may have been enrolled in any school in Massachusetts in those two previous grades. Let's select one student in the class. This student's grade five MCAS math score was two twenty-eight. The grade six score was two thirty. Now let's look again at all the schools in Massachusetts and find the students who have the same MCAS score history as Joe Schmo's student. These students are test score peers. Note that these are not peers based on any demographic characteristics. Students whose previous test scores are the same may be very different demographically. Each student takes the math MCAS test this year in grade seven and receives a score. In this example, each score is different. Some go up, some go down, and some stay the same. The students are rank ordered by the amount of improvement in their grade seven scores compared to the previous two years. Joe Schmo's student had the second largest improvement. Each student is assigned a percentile score. The student from Joe Schmo's class is in the ninetieth percentile. His score this year went up from two thirty to two forty, improvement that was as good as or better than ninety percent of his test score peers. The percentile score becomes each student's SGP score. Note that students whose scores went down also have a growth score. The student whose score went down by four points has an SGP of twenty. This means that the scores of twenty percent of the students in this test score cohort declined as much or more than did this student's score. Returning to Joe Schmo's class, each student now has an SGP based on how well each did compared to the students in the corresponding statewide test score cohort. The students in the class are ranked according to their SGP score. Students with very different scores can have the same SGP. Student we have followed has an SGP of ninety. Another student also has an SGP of ninety, but that student's score did not change this year and the score is much lower, two fourteen compared to two forty. But within that student's statewide peer group, only ten percent of the students had higher scores this year. To determine the SGP for Joe's class or for school, grade, or district, identify the middle student in the group. In this example, that student has an SGP of forty. That student's score, the median for the class, becomes the classroom SGP.
So that's actually just a quick demonstration of the difference between the scaled score and versus the SGP.
That, and parents will get that in a report when they receive it. They'll receive to see how the scaled score is when they get a report and also their child SGP. Okay? So that's, that's one thing that I, I wanted to talk about to, to bring it so we know that we're looking at two different things. And then we're going to be looking at that later in the report. Next slide. What I want to share with you, just as Dr. Conti said, is that we use the MCAS here as just one of our measures. Okay? It's just a one piece of data point. The other district assessments that we use, for instance, are in K through eight, for instance, which is I-Ready. That's both a normative and criterion reference diagnostic test. That's taken three times a year in September, January, and May. We also take the K through two DIBELS. That's for, again, basic early literature skills. And that's taken three times a year in September, January, and May. And then we also take formative assessments. We also take phonemic awareness screeners and then the DRA three as well too. For math, we take the K through five, kindergarten through fifth grade symphony. And that is done, it's screener, using national norms. That's K through five, that's done three times. We also have a district-created local norms in which that is given to students as well too. We also take enumeracy benchmarkers, there's local norms and diagnostic. And then from grade six to grade eight, we take I-Ready math, which is the normative and criteria reference diagnostic. So this whole point in this slide is just to show you that there are already many assessments that occur in this particular district. And so these are the ones, for instance, when we have our data meetings, that we're actually sitting down with a group of principals, a group of teachers and talking about that and talking about where we are with our RTI model, which our students near tier two and tier three intervention. And again, MCAS is just one data point. Next. The, the thing that I want to talk about when it comes to absences next, is that what we were cited for when it comes to our accountability report, and your accountability report is made up, there's, it's a very, it's a formula in which everything's assigned a certain point system. It wasn't based on our performance or our achievement. It was based on the fact that for our high school, for instance, we had the low participation rate. We did not meet ninety-five percent percentile in our Hispanic Latino L and formal Ls. And also at Fox Hill, for our special educations reporting group, we did not meet ninety-five percent. So one of the things that we're doing at the high school, just so that you know, to increase the fact that we're getting more of our L students to take our- to increase the fact that we're getting more of our L students to take our MCAS is that for the students are in the SLIF program, they didn't attend because they had not taken a specific biology course. So one of the things that we've done with our EL science classes is that we've incorporated more biology concepts and skills. And two of these students and others will test this year and two of the students and others will test this year in the Alternative Academy and they'll take biology and these are more focused classes with Jill Graham. So one of the things that we're doing is to really focus and pay attention. With regard to our other elementary school, Fox Hill, one of the things that I just, I think there may be, maybe a misconception sometimes that's given to parents, but I just want to make sure that I'm very clear about this for all parents is that you cannot opt out. You, you can if you want to, but when you opt out, we are held by the state of Massachusetts. It's actually a state law that students in grades three through eight and also 10 must take a state assessment. So it isn't like I can just opt out. We, we actually have to take this test. And this test is actually good practice because in the 10th grade on high school, you need to pass the English, math, and science test in order, and the CD competencies in order to get a high school diploma. So in the end, this is a high stakes test, but it doesn't occur until the high school. And then for those students who do not pass the first time, we have remediation, we help them out. But all of our students have a very high percentage of passing at the high school. So it's just to be very mindful that again, the only reason that we received what we did receive was because of low participation, one at the high school and one at Fox Hill. And so we need to continue just to make sure that parents know, for instance, that you, that you have to take these tests and that these tests eventually do count at the high school. So that's the message that I just, I really want to present. And that also at the high school, that we're also working very hard with our L population of students to make sure that our curriculum is more aligned with biology and that even if our students come in for the first time while they're exempt for English, they still have to take the other assessments and that is just happens to be state law. So we've got to work with what we have. That being said, in the next couple of slides I want to share with you, these are just the number of students because it takes 20 students for there to be a reporting group in each of these subcategories that are a reporting group. So what this is are the absences on our MCAS dates for English. This is one example. Next slide, please. These are the district-wide absences for our MCAS dates in math. And this, this is our district-wide absences on MCAS dates in science. So when MCAS does come around, it's really important that our students really take these MCAS tests. It is what it is. Now with demographics, what I just wanted to show you is that with our student demographics, as you can see, we have a growing number of students who are coming to us in multiple languages. So that's an area that we continue to work on. We also have working with our, also a subgroup with our special education students as well, too. If you notice that that is both IEP and 504s. Next in the demographic slide, this does a breakdown of all of our students in all of our categories. Again, just to show you, we continue to have students on IEPs and 504s as well, too, in the middle school and our English language learners. That's always also starting to increase as well, too. And then high school as well, too. And if you take a look at that, at the high school, last year, only nine students tested. So that becomes a very small percentage, for instance, when you're talking about 95% participation rate. So it means that every student counts when they're taking, when they're participating in the state examination that is required of the state regardless of what your philosophy is. Okay? So the smaller the numbers we know, if one person is missing, then it becomes much easier not to make the 95 percentile. So one of the things that I just wanted to also just share with you that I thought was also a very interesting piece of data is that with the absence of maybe one student, just so that you know, and this is something that we're going to take a look at, the instructional team. Presently in elementary, even though it said IEP and 504, there are 332 students on IEPs in all four of our elementary schools. Then at the middle school, it becomes 155 students. And then that number is again reduced then at the high school, which then becomes 78 students. So the, one of the things that our instructional team is looking at was we continue to look at to ensure that all of our students are receiving the specialized instruction that they need to receive, but also why is it that there's a large population of students at the elementary school that is 332 on IEP? So that's one of the things that we're taking a look at. All right. Next, I want to open up to what Open Architect is about. And this is a wonderful database that pulls in all the different pieces of data, not only from MCAS, but also from the data that we have in-house. And I just want to show you how it looks like because you're going to see the static data, but what you're going to be able to actually see is the dynamic data of what it looks like when our administrators and later on teachers had the opportunity to go in there and play around with Open Architect. It's a really neat tool.
So one of the things that we looked at is, well, what, what you were just seeing was just some screenshots of, of the, how the data is presented in Open Architect. And so it's, but what we want to do is show you how dynamic the data can, can be. And so what I'm looking at here is our MCAS results at the Marshall Simons Middle School. And I'm looking at the average student growth percentile, which we just talked about. When you look at overall, you'll see how we have done here at Marshall Simons Middle School. But what we can do here in, in the great piece of, you know, part of, of Open Architects is we can look at every subgroup individually. And so when Dr. Conti, Dr. Chen, myself, and other instructional team were together, we were, we wanted to say, okay, let's look at just our Asian population. And so if I'm just clicking on this box here for the Asian students, we can see how our Asian students are doing. We can change that and we can just look at how our Black students are doing. And we, so this kind of helps us pinpoint some specific areas that we need to look at. Again, we, we can look at our Hispanic population, see where, where we need to sort of focus some attention on. So we can look at everything at, as you're going to see in some screenshots that Dr. Chen is going to share with you. But what we can do with, through this Open Architects is we can look through a very finite pieces of data. We can look at students who are the EL students. We could, we, right now, we're looking at all students, but if we want to just look at students who are the, our EL population, we can see how the, the, the growth has, how it's different from the total population. We can look at, at each subgroup more specifically. So we really just wanted to point out, you know, I'm just going to go here to the IEP 504 just so that we can look at that as well. And so what, what we want to point out is that Open Architects gives us an opportunity to, to really see the, the data in a, in a more dynamic way. What, what Dr. Chen is going to be showing you are slides from this. It's just a, a point in, you know, for all of our students, but, but we as a group can start looking more, you know, at a, at a more specific level for each of our demographics, for each of our, our, our students to sort of see what, where we need to move, move our, our teaching, you know, what, what, what we need to focus on a little bit more.
Thank you so much, Robyn. I appreciate that. Thank you. And the next slide, which is a more static piece. Yes, excellent. Thank you so much. What you'll see here are, I wanted to lay, our team and I wanted to lay by you next by next. The blue line is where we are when it comes to above, you can see that we're above the state average. The reason why there's a dip in 2021 is because that was during the pandemic year. And so you see on one side the achievement and then you see another side the growth, right? So what's very important is not only to pay attention to the achievement, always pay attention also to the growth because the goal is always, there's a range of growth which is between 40 to 60, right? And 40 to 60 is always like the sweet spot, but 50 is the middle line. And when you're really going 60 and above, that's when you know that your students are achieving more of the high growth. But 40 to 60 is usually the norm of where growth happens for all students. All right, next slide. And again, this slide that Robyn had shared earlier is just another way of looking at it. And it shows it's broken down with students, how many of them are exceeding, how many are meeting, how many are partial meeting and how much are not meeting. And this gives you the data all the way from 218 to 223. Next, please. So this is just a more holistic way, but you can even drill down to the item, now, item, item analysis that a lot of the principals have been doing already with their teachers. And again, this is breaking it down. You can see that we are still above the state average and that also comes in writing as well, too. This is in grades three through five. Next slide. This is the middle school right here. You can see that the middle school, the results of where we are, not only in achievement, but also when it comes to growth as well, too. The dark blue line is where, how we're doing and then the spotted line is how the state average is. Next. Another way to look at the English student performance by year is also to look at it through this bar graph that Robyn had shared with you earlier. Again, this is more of a holistic piece, but what ends up happening is conversations might occur in departments such as, I noticed from one year to one year that we are actually increasing with the number of students who are exceeding. That's a good thing. So what are we doing in our curriculum? What are we doing with the alignment of our standards to make that happen? So again, it's always the questions that come from analyzing the data that is most important. Next. Again, this is how the middle school did with regard to language, reading, and writing. And again, where, where the state average is, we're seeing that we're surpassing the state average. Again, with writing, that is an example right there. Next. This is at the high school level. So at the high school level, you're seeing both a graph that is results of achievement and then that of student growth. And these are just continual conversations. I think that department heads are also, I know for a fact that department heads are also having with each of their subject areas to take a look and to break down what's going on in our curriculum. Next. Again, as you can see, we have a greater number of students, at least 24% in the exceeding. It's always numbers when you're always stretching. You want to always make sure that more and more are hitting that exceeding bar. All right, next. This is at the high school again. This is our achievement. This is where our writing is. In addition to that, we're above the state average. All right, we're going to be talking about math next. With regard to math, when we take a look at this, this is our grade three through five achievement and growth by year. And one of the things that we're talking about is what we need to do to continue to. So it's one thing to have good achievement, right? But it's another thing to continue to pay attention to the growth. So I know that what Carrie Fortinato is doing with her math specialists is taking to ensure and looking at our assessments and looking at our curriculum as well, too, because not only do we want to make sure that we continue to achieve, but that at the same time that we're, we're making high growth. All right, next. We are making, as you can see, 9% when it comes to exceeding. That percentage is rising. That's elementary math student performance by year. I want to talk a little bit about the elementary math here. When it comes to this particular bar graph, when it comes to the average percentage correct by item, item category in math, one of the things I do want to point out is that I know that last year in taking a look at the data, we were below state average when it came to geometry. There's a lot of hard work when it came to aligning the curriculum and reteaching the geometry standards. And this year that we have surpassed that. And so I give credit to all of the math specialists and also the elementary math teachers who are working very hard on that particular strand. All right, next. This is the middle school math by performance. They're doing both, they're, they're doing well in both when it comes to the achievement and also achieving, achieving the growth that they need to do. And again, as you can see with the middle school math student performance by year when it comes to the bar graph that's in the next slide, what you can see is that we're increasing the number that we should, also at the exceeding and that's an area that we also need to take a look at. Next. I want to talk to, this is another, this is the holistic view. And as you can see, that we're exceeding again in the state average. One of the things that we'll continue to take a look at, I know that math teachers are talking about that is because, is the ratios and proportional relationships. And that's actually a conversation that starts all the way in elementary school. All right, next, please. And then this is high school math. And I know that we have been working on taking a look at, one of the questions is, while we are still achieving, right, what's going on with our growth? And I know that that's something that Katie Whipcomb is taking a look at with her math department and with Matt, with Mr. Sullivan, Mark Sullivan in that. But I would say that one of the things that we're also taking a look at is we're taking a look at how math proceeds itself pre-K through 12 and we're doing an item-by-item analysis. All right, next. As you can see in this particular slide, we did go by 1% when it came to exceeding in the high school math. Next, please. And one of the areas I've spoken to Mark Sullivan and Katie Sullivan about is about the statistics and probability. That's an area that we'll need to continue to work on. And one of the things that, that he has surmised from this is because we have some students, for instance, who jump from Algebra I into geometry at the high school without, without even taking Algebra I. And that's one of the areas that our math review group is taking a look at. The other areas we're taking a look at is how do we ensure, for instance, that if we have students who need to take Algebra I in the middle school, what is that going to look like and what is that's going to entail? Those conversations have begun. All right. And our science performance, and I'm glad that I have Sean Musselman here to serve as my backup, who's sitting in the audience. Hello, Sean, in case I'm not explaining this as well. All right, in the next slide, as you can see, when it comes to our MCAS grade five performance here, just one thing just for you to note that in science, there isn't a student growth. There isn't an SGP only because there isn't anything to compare it to in the past. You need about two years of data for it to compare to and there's nothing to compare it to because we have grade five, which is, happens to be the, the science and then it's again in grade eight. So this is how our comparison is. And again, as you can see, there was that dip that occurred and with everyone and that dip came as a result of COVID. All right, next. One of the things that we're taking a look at is we are just barely there when it comes to the state average. But I know that one of the things that we're taking a look at is our curriculum and I know that Sean is hard at work and so is Wendy. Now, truth be told, we, in our elementary, in our elementary, in our elementary curriculum in an elementary day, one of the things is in order to put our SCL curriculum, because there's not enough time in the day, we've had to take one day away from science. And I know that that's been very hard. And I know that Sean has worked very hard with Wendy to meet with every single science teacher. It's already occurred since the beginning of the school year to look at how do we redefine that curriculum and prepare our students still for the grade five technology and science test. And so that, those conversations have occurred. And in addition to that, I know that they're spiraling the curriculum. And in addition to that, they're also offering professional development that happens on Wednesdays. And from what I know, there are, there are quite a few teachers that come voluntarily to attend those sessions to learn more about the curriculum. All right, and you are shaking your head. So I, I'm, okay, excellent. The grade eight performance, that's the next slide. I know one of the areas that the middle school has put into is they've taken a look at Open Sci, SciEd is the name of the curriculum and what that curriculum does is it spirals. They're in their second year of looking into that curriculum. And that curriculum, for the most part, I've heard from the teachers, has been more aligned to the standards. But that's something that we're continuing to work on. And one of the things, as you can see, an area that, that everything is a continuum. So we need to continue to work on our life science. But again, those are some areas, but as you can see, we excel when it comes to the technology and engineering, physical science, earth and space science. So again, as I can say, next, please. One of the things I can talk to you about is that this is just a data point that we use. It's one of our data points to help with the design of our curriculum and to ensure that there is alignment with our curriculum. And then one of the things I am also working at pre-K through 12 is also with the science curriculum leaders. And we're taking a look at science across the board, especially in light of that we've had to cut down science at the elementary school like one day a week because we know that that's going to impact eventually the middle school and the high school. And so we're beginning those conversations now. So I've done, you know, uh somewhat a summary of our MCAS. And I don't know if there are questions that folks may have about it. But I think one of the things that I love about Open Architect is that it provides a different way for us to look at data and makes it interactive. And I know one of the things is that um the principals have been working with it. They've also been printing out reports for their teachers. And our next phase is once the principals get very, very comfortable with it, we're going to be sharing it with all the teachers so that they can be interactive with these particular reports that are in already in um Open Architect.
Um, does the state give us goals or do we create our own goals?
No, they give us targets.
Okay.
They give us targets and it's based on um a very complex mathematical formula. But I can look up that mathematical formula and give you in greater detail where what how they give us our our particular targets. But when when it came to, and this is on the, this is on the district profile and it's a public, it's public knowledge. We actually, we were uh, we were surpass, we were meeting where we needed to be. We're surpassing, we're surpassing the growth targets. So again, where we fell behind wasn't in so much the achievement. It was because of our participation rate. And we have to have ninety-five percent in all of our subgroups.
Okay, um, but are we are we setting goals? I in I know we saw some that were below state average.
Yes.
Are we aiming for state average or are we aiming for above state average?
We are always aiming above state average.
Okay.
And we're always aiming for high growth. But again, this is one measurement. And I think it's one measurement that helps us check to see whether or not there is alignment with our curriculum. That's how I would see it. But I can tell you that the teachers work extremely hard and we're not satisfied with just being average.
Are we gonna, are you gonna share, are they published goals or are they, didn't they go then cascade? Like a district goal, a school goal, a classroom goal? Like, are we getting that level or right now it's just high level?
So right now, just so that you know, it's high level. But one of the things is our our school goals, while they use some of the MCAS data, it's not MCAS driven, right? What is most important was that other slide that I shared with you was the combination of all of our, all of our indicators because it's only one measure of our indicators. But yes, there are goals, like for instance, and I'm happy to share that later on with you. But this was more of a high level tonight. Um, because we can really go deep, deep in this if we want to. But um, for instance, the example I can give to you is that the year previous to that, we had not made state average when it came to our geometry strand at the elementary math level. That is something that the math specialists worked very hard on. They revamped their curriculum. That's something that they took a hard look at. And we exceeded it this year. All the way up to below, it was like below even below that, below state average last year. And we're above this year. So I give kudos for that amount of work within such a short period of time.
Um, Madam Chair, Ms. Masard, I I wouldn't give a school an MCAS goal anyway, just because it's um, it's not reflective of the quality of teaching that's taking place in that school. We we look at growth. But again, these are scores now in October that were for students who took the test in April or May of of last year. It's too late for us to use these scores as as an instructional tool. So again, what we want to do is look at that forty to sixty sort of band of student performance because that's typically a student making a year's worth of growth in a year's worth of time. Students who are behind need to make more than a year's worth of growth in a year's worth of time if they're ever going to catch up. So we're pretty, we're more sensitive to the growth factor than we are. We use the data to look for achievement gaps. Again, I think Robin showed um Open Architects. So uh gaps would be, again, all students can achieve to high levels. But if we see a characteristic of a student group that is underperforming, uh then we would sort of want to look at that. Our largest achievement gap happens to be in our L population, especially our newcomer population. Uh, as you can imagine, um, that would make sense. Um, and then you would see us um supplementing our programs, um adding, for instance, an alternative high school day program to try to um uh address uh some of those achievement gaps and those needs. So again, I um, we've, we're presenting lots of numbers and believe me, we just scratched the surface of this. I just, there are students and there are talented educators behind the numbers. And um, that's really where we're uh where we're focusing. I don't think an MCAS goal would um, everyone wants to do well on it. But it really wouldn't um, it's not timely enough for us to use as a, you know, as as a tool after the fact. It just, it doesn't, it's not a tool to shape instruction from my perspective.
Mr. Brooks?
Yeah, so as you went through the briefing, I noticed in the ELA for high school, there were, on the growth slide, there was actually a curve positive, like significantly, like a twenty percent divergence from the state average to what was reported during the pandemic. So I just, it seemed odd to me. I just don't know what the explanation is for that. And then uh, the other question I have is, as I try to look at this and understand how to digest this data and it makes sense rectified in my head, you know, for the um, science that's under target because we moved SCL, would it be appropriate to use this as a, you know, monitor and control measure going to next year to say, hey, maybe we need to realign SCL or displace something else to bring this back and close that gap?
Yeah, I mean hugely. Again, science curriculum experts in the room. But uh, sometimes if the students aren't performing well in the test, it's not because they don't have the ability, it's because we haven't covered the content. So I mean, at some point, um, we we have to make sure there's enough time to deliver. Um, and there's never enough time. So I'm saying, I think that's what we're competing against is um, you know, what what we cover. And again, that's why an MCAS target isn't always such a good thing because there are so many other factors that contribute to it. But Mr. Brooks, we would look at that. And it may, might be an adult reason, a scheduling reason why there's uh, why we're seeing that uh discrepancy between where we think our kids should perform and where they're performing on a particular subject area. Um, and I think those are the conversations that we're we're having.
Yeah, I'm just, like I said, I'm just trying to understand how to interpret, interpret the data correctly. So I'm not making assumptions that are untrue, right?
Yeah, and uh, again, that's math.
Can uh, Mr. Musselman, would you like to come up and make an, do some explanation?
This is by no means a dig on anybody. I'm just trying to understand.
Maybe you could explain some of it.
That was the one.
Great, would you come to the microphone so everyone can hear you? Thank you.
And I, and I also do think that um, I may have also online are some of my directors as well, too. Uh, just because I know that sometimes I, they are online. So if there are specific question, um, we can also tap into their knowledge base as well, too. But after uh, Mr. Musselman is done explaining this, I also wouldn't want to talk to you about what the math plan and science plan is, is moving forward so that you understand what we're doing with all this data.
Mr. Musselman.
So, Mr. Brooks, thank you for your astute awareness of the the slight dip in the life science. Are we on that? Uh, no, we're just looking at the side of my head. Um, so, so if we do, if we were to review that partic- particular um site, what you would see there is that that the disciplines that we are addressing, physical life, earth science, are all very essentially on that state average. One of the situations that of course comes up with science versus math or ELA is that it's, it's only assessed at the fifth, eighth and tenth grade level. Our fifth grade life science unit is an ecosystems unit that is typically done at the end of the year and is even done either in the moment that it is starting, uh, that they're starting that test or in the after. So when we think about that broad aggregate of um units, particularly at the third, fourth and fifth level, where all of those test questions, items are being sort of assessed, it's not surprising to me that of those disciplines, the um, the fifth grade life science unit sort of takes a little bit of a, of a hit compared to the other ones. I just want to note the um, the, the stretch and difference in our um engineering standards. And I just, I just want to say like, that's a really what I think has been special. And I've appreciated as a science specialist in this district for twelve years now is our attention to engineering and and the cost that comes with that. Those are dispose uh, consumable materials that uh we go through, uh, year in, year out. It's the type of thing that um students don't typically get access to at schools where maybe they don't have folks like um myself and Ms. Pavlicek, um, where it might be a more literacy-based curriculum that that real work um gets done there. I also just want to acknowledge and um, thank you, Dr. Conti, for being so clear about your your own feelings around the multitude of measurements here. One of the things that we lose in this conversation, um, because our tests only focus and predominantly focus on math and ELA, and then science to a lesser degree, is those other disciplines that matter so much, specifically social studies, which I am also responsible for at the elementary level. And um, that is just one key domain that we have also lost reduction time to because of the SCL. Um, you know, move, again, not discarding any reason for that. Um, obviously needed in our students as well. But um, you know, I, when I sit here and also think about the conversa- uh, the conversations from our uh, public participants and the need for discourse in the social sciences and understanding of history, civic discourse, right? All of the complexities of our world that uh this test does not assess. I just uh always want to take that opportunity to um reflect on that and make sure that we keep this in in mind with what is important. So thank you for your time.
Thanks for the explanation.
Does anyone else have a question for Mr. Musselman? Okay, uh, okay.
I just.
Yes, Dr. Chen?
All I just wanted to say is that um, to your point, um, Mr. Brooks, that's why like, you know, the two curriculums that, and and Dr. Conti knows, is the two curriculums that I really wanted to pay attention. My first year year was, one was math. And and I can go tell you what we're doing in math in a few minutes. But since Mr. Musselman is here, is the other is science. And we've already had um, two pre K through twelve meetings when it comes to science. Because I I want to say this with all due respect. There was a choice that was made, right? Because SCL is very important. The social emotional learning of our kids is extremely, extremely important. But there was a very hard choice made because there's only so much time in the day and so many slices of the pie that you can make, right? And so one of the things that we talked about as a team that had to be, that had to be kind of put in in another bucket, right? Was science. And so one of the things in thinking about that is that's why that committee formulated this year. Because we need to keep a very strict eye on what could that impact mean, especially at the middle school in which they've adopted, this is their second year adopting a curriculum. And then what could that mean eventually to their high school? Especially since we live in Burlington, it's a very scientific engineer-heavy community, right? But there's a balance, right? It's, there's a balance. And it's never disparaging one thing versus another. But one of the things I can say is that because of those conversations, one of the things that have been so helpful, and Sean, you can tell, you know, please, please speak up if you also feel that way, too, is that I think that when you have the opportunity to have science leaders at the table, talk about what each of them are doing, you begin to look at curriculum not only just in silos, but you begin to look at it both vertically and horizontally. And so sometimes like the middle school teacher doesn't know or the middle school director doesn't know, program coordinator doesn't know to what extent the kids are coming in with the science and what's being lost, right? And so this is a conversation that we're having. This is, we're going to continue to have these conversations and curriculum. So what sits, who sits at our committee is Wendy, Sean. Um, I have an administrator from the high school, Holly Potters, who is our department chair at the high school because it's very important for them to know what's going on at the elementary school level. And then Penyota Antonias, who is at the middle school when it comes to the assistant principal of curriculum instruction there. And also from the middle school, happens to be Crystal Gorman, who is the program director there. So we're all having conversations about, and then our last thing that we've finished that we're going to present later on, and Bob Coonan at another time, is we've talked about um, just our chemical hygiene plan, about the disposal of what we do with our chemicals, right? So these are just beginning conversations. But I know that these are conversations that are so important to be had. Do you want to add anything about the conversations we've been having pre K through twelve?
Uh, sure, since you asked, Dr. Chen, and thank you, um, because there is a lot of great work. I just want to acknowledge again that um, you know, there is, wow, there, I understand the need to to look at this and and this is sort of an annual thing that all school committees do. Um, I can't help but recognize the insidiousness of of this um, of this data, right? We've got super cool programming tool that assesses and ranks it all and and makes cool charts that we can all look in and dissect at. But um, in the same breath, Dad, this great conversation with our high school department chairs around Portrait of a Graduate and how the Portrait of a Graduate work that takes place at that high school and how that uh, how they feel so strongly about that being the foundation of what we assess our students on. And so much of those skills, while certainly connected to success on these uh, te- um, tests, cannot uh fully be um assessed in in that. And yet, uh, we don't get the cool graphs for that work that is so important and done every day. So um, I will, I will cease my time. Thank you for my um Ted Talk and um.
No, I appreciate it. And like I said, I understand this is a snapshot in time. This is one data point. But again, I've not seen this before, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around how to use this data and how to, you know, ask intelligent questions to, you know, see where we're going, see what we're doing and, and you know, make sure we're not improperly using this tool.
And I would say that at any point in time, if you need me to do a follow-up, I'm more than happy to because I love data. I love data and I can talk to you about it anytime. May I just, I have one more thing to say about this.
Okay, I think Ms. Monica had a comment. Did you want to say something first?
Okay.
Or did you want?
What would you like to do, Mrs. Monica?
You go first.
No, if it's about this topic, I was going to go to math, whatever you want.
No, I just, first, I wanted to say thanks for a great report. I wonder if we could get um, an electronic copy of it. And um, relative to both math and science, they're, they're both kind of my uh, subjects of importance. Not that the others aren't important, but those are the ones I like the best. And um, I like where you're going with math. I I know you're going to talk about that in a minute. And uh, relative to the science, I, I don't think we can afford to um, to remain not giving enough time to science. I think we need to look at the schedules and work it out. And we need more time on science, obviously. The MCAS don't lie. And uh, it sounds from what Mr. Musselman said that we probably should rearrange some of the uh curriculum pieces so that the kids get to learn it before they get tested on it.
Uh, I would respectfully argue, Mrs. Monaco, that every day of the school year matters and the last twenty or twenty-five that take place after the MCAS. Um, I feel strongly that we will still educate our kids during that time, whether or not it shows up on the reporting of this test.
Oh, I'm sure you're accurate on that. Um, but I think it would be nice if it showed up on the, on the MCAS, if we can find an easy way to do it. I mean, I'm not saying, you know, that it's the end of the world. But if they're going to be tested on something in um, in May and they don't start to learn it till April, it's.
Well, we're, uh, I will just say respectfully, um, every day that we're teaching in science and um, science in our elementary classrooms, because of the um, limited amount of time, I can assure you that every day that we spend on a science lesson is rooted in a very specific standard that is being assessed on this test. And um, we make, we make um, decisions that cut into the bone and the muscle.
So we need more time.
I would argue that the town can't afford it. Can't afford not to, excuse me.
Clearly, we need more time on science.
So um, again, I think that for the sake of this argument, this is a snapshot. I think that quality is much more important. We are trying to fit, I think, ten pounds of high-quality curriculum into a two-pound bag. And so I think um, I think we are um, doing that. And again, MCAS is one measure. As Mr. Musselman said, it doesn't measure joy, it doesn't measure um curiosity. There are many other things that we look at. It is part of the state accountability system. We use it as, again, one measure, as an opportunity. Um, one data point would not sort of, we will, we need to look at this over uh, over time. And I think having a healthy perspective as to what this sort of means and the impact uh on learning um, is what I've also think Burlington has done a good job of. I, you know, it's, it's um, our kids need to be prepared and have You know, it's, our kids need to be prepared and have to sort of overcome this hurdle to get a diploma. That's sort of what we do. The vast majority of our high school kids. MCAS is not the limiting factor for them to get their diploma. I think that's the success story over time. And we just need to be aware of it. And, you know, we could do an analysis down to the question. Mr. Musselman could rearrange the sequence of all of his teaching, and the state then could change the test questions. And then you would say, boy, oh, boy, you know, we made the wrong conclusion. So, I think we're trying to focus on quality. And I think our students in general, again, do well. And we want to make sure, again, that they are continuing to grow in their learning, even if the content has to catch up at different times. We'll sort of, we sort of make that happen. I just want to make sure that we are sort of required to do an MCAS presentation every year. You've seen the MCAS presentation. The schools that were sort of highlighted from the state in regards to accountability. Again, I think as Dr. Chen said, it was a participation problem, not a achievement problem. We are working, sort of, we're working on that. We have some control over that, not complete control over that. And I hope you appreciate that. I think everyone is doing, again, a very, a very good job, and we are adjusting as we see fit. This is not an instructional tool. I really look at MCAS as more of an adult accountability system that the poor kids have to, they have to sort of participate in for us to know, again, are we aligning what the state content that they're expecting us to teach.
So, Dr. Chen, did you have something else you wanted to add?
Dr. Chen, to wrap up the math conversation, and then we have some more agenda items that I'd love to get to. Not to cut off the conversation. We can certainly have a state accountability conversation that's coming up. I believe there's going to be a big public effort in regards to the state accountability system that I'm sure people will want you to weigh in on coming up shortly. So, with that, with the math, again, I think you have some updates.
Yes.
And then we can move on.
I will expedite in these updates, but I just wanted you to know where we are in our pre-K through 12 curriculum writing. So, the two goals that we've set aside is that, the goal is we want to maximize the impact of mathematics instruction for every student so that our mathematical teaching practices and policies ensures equity of access and opportunity, the highest levels of mathematical learning for every student. We want to ensure that our policies, procedures, and practices are equitable and support a diverse and inclusive learning environment in every mathematical classroom for every mathematical learner. And so, I've gone ahead and we've created some stipend positions. I have 15 teachers who are going to begin with me, starting on October 30, with my, the outside consultant to start really analyzing the math curriculum pre-K through 12. I have representation of special education teachers, English language learner teachers, elementary teachers from all four, the elementary schools, middle school teachers, and high schools teachers sitting with me on this particular committee. We're going to look at the core pathways. One of the things that we're going to take a look at is, is or should there be Algebra I in the middle school? And what are the barriers to access and opportunities? What we're going to come out with this is a final report at the end of year one with what are our recommendations for curriculum revisions, instructional materials, and also professional development based on gold alignment and data-informed criteria. And, Mr. Brooks, we will also be presenting the data too. We will also recommend mathematical course pathways, including Algebra I in the middle school, ready for course registration and determining the FTEs, if that's a movement we will go through. And then, we have also created measurable impacts that are long-term. So, some of the measurable impacts that I'm going to be working on, Robin, and creating with an open architect, is to take a look at who is enrolled in our high school math classes. What is the completion rate of high school math courses? And what is the high school math course sequence enrollment? What are the elementary and middle math tiers of support, identifying and participation? And yes, we will include MCAS scores for grades three through eight in math. And so, we're going to continue to meet. And along each step of the way, our first meeting happens to be, it's this upcoming Monday, and they're each an hour and a half long. It's going to be with each of the, with the teachers that I just named, and also administrators sitting on that committee as well too. I've asked administrator from each of the elementary, middle, and also high schools so they understand as instructional leaders what is going on in this process. So, we have a working session from 3:00 to 4:30 with Dr. Thunder. And we're going to continue on throughout October, November, December, January, February, March, April, May. And then, along the lines, I'll give you like hard data and reports and share them out with you to the school committee. But I just want you to know that the work is underway. In addition to that, what's also underway is that meanwhile, I also sit with another group of administrators. These are administrators for us to start taking a look at some of the criteria for students already now going into Algebra I. Mark Sullivan, we've all decided that we need to have some sort of make, there are some prerequisite criterias that are going to be asked of students who are, if we go in the high school, stay in the high school, the structure, the way it is for Algebra I honors and those skipping Algebra I. We're going to be looking for a diagnostic assessment to assess our students additionally to the grades, to the I-ready, to the recommendations. We need to have some sort of assessment to see how our students are doing. And from that, it will give us a really good basis of when their place, if they're going to be successful. If they jump, if they jump Algebra I and start with geometry, since Algebra I is the gateway for calculus, whether or not they're going to be successful. So, all of those pieces are in the works. Okay?
Great. Well, thank you, Dr. Chen. I'm trying to wrap up, but go ahead, Ms. Monaco.
I'm just wondering if, at some point in time, when you have accomplished all this, and I think it's great that you're working on the math, do you think that you might do the same kind of evaluation with science?
Yes. What we're doing is what Dr. Conti let me do. And because I'm short of time, next time, I promise, that's only year one. There's a plan for year two, year three, and year four for math. But at the same time, if this is something, a whole thing is to make it reproducible. The next place we're going to be going is science.
Good. Thank you.
And before we leave the MCAS issue, I just wanted to ask you, Dr. Conti, we're talking about system-level, district-level, big-picture understanding of the scores from Burlington. If there's a parent who has a question about their individual child's MCAS scores and performance, what would be the best person for them to contact and be in touch with to help them understand it?
I think they should call their school. They can call the principal, and we can direct, better direct what their question is. So, you know, at that time. And again, I just, please don't lose sight that there are people behind all of this data, and there are kids who are working really hard. And some could have a tremendous year of growth and still not sort of meet an absolute score on an MCAS. And again, our educators are working incredibly hard to produce the growth that you're seeing. So, I just think I don't want that to be lost, and that's the focus that I'm really looking at and to make sure our kids are making progress. And so, that's, I think, the limited usefulness of this, it might be in that area.
Thank you. And hopefully, we can move on. Got one more thing?
I was just going to make a comment that, you know, it's great that, you know, people want to understand the MCAS scores, you know, in relation to their own student, but I want to make sure that people look at the whole picture. This is one piece, you know, and there's a lot of pressure put on students about passing. The MCAs are doing well on them. And, you know, some kids, that's too much for them. They gets, they may not test as well as other students. So, it's really important to look at the whole picture, look at how your students doing overall, not just focusing on MCAS. That's just one piece.
Okay, Dr. Conti, shall we move on to the policy?
The very exciting part. The exciting part about the policies are, these are the last, last two sections.
Indeed.
And so, we'll talk about what will happen as the result. But I didn't hear from a whole lot of folks in regards to K, but there were some suggestions and that I'm going to follow. So, I think in, you should have the policies and my notes for K. So, where K isn't very that long, I'm just going to go quickly through. Again, KA, we're going with the MASC, KBA, MASC. Non-custodial parents' rights, we're going to add the MASC policy. KBE, we're going to add the MASC policy. What we're doing with KCD is, there was some language in Burlington language, but the feedback I got is the MASC policy was cleaner and more up-to-date. So, I'm going to recommend just the MASC policy for KCD. We're going to remove KCDR. We don't need the procedures in there. KDA, we're going to keep Burlington. That's actually a, probably an aspirational one, that everything is translated, but we're making progress there. And I think it's important that we do that. We actually are legally obligated in many cases to have translations done. The public's right to know, KBD is MASC only. I got no feedback on that. Again, KDD, news media relations, I was only MASC, no feedback on that. KE, public complaints, MASC. KF, community use of facilities. And what we said is we wanted to, feedback was to eliminate number eight. So, if you go to that policy, it talks about, for KF, it talks about the school committee approving different groups. That's not anything that we've done historically. We've always handled that. So, the number eight is the activities of other organizations when approved by the school committee. If there's ever a question, we bring it to the school committee, but we've always managed that through our application process. So, again, my recommendation is to adopt KF, but with the number eight eliminated.
And what does that do? What's the effect of eliminating eight?
It would keep our practices as they currently are, where people would apply. And again, if we ever had a question about the appropriateness of use, we would come to the school committee. But we're not asking you to approve the organizations that apply to our facilities. And it allows for a wide umbrella of other organizations, if you look at numbers one through seven. So, that would be. KFR, we're going to eliminate, it's a Burlington document only. And then, there's, so we're going to eliminate KFR1, which is the after-hours facility usage. That is part of the rental agreement already. KFR2, community garden, we're going to keep because that's Burlington language.
I'm sorry, what did you say about KFR?
KFR, we're going to, what did I say for KFR?
Did you say we're eliminating it?
No.
You said remove KFR, but then you meant KFR1.
We're going to eliminate KFR1.
Okay, so we're using the MASC KFR?
Yes.
Okay.
So, before we remove KFR1, is there a stated priority of who gets to use it?
There is in the other policy in.
I didn't see that one.
Sorry, Mr. Brooks, I'm losing my head here. In the prior policy, the KF policy, I believe.
Got it. Good.
There are priorities mentioned in that. Again, KFR1, we're going to eliminate because that's part of the rental agreement. KFR2 is the community garden, so that is Burlington language we'll keep. The public solicitation is an MASC-only policy, so we'll keep the MASC version. KHB is not needed because of KCD, so we want to delete KHB. Visitors to school, we're going to keep but add required as opposed to recommended. That was a suggestion. And then, KLG, relations with police authorities, we don't need because we have an MOU. KLJ, KLK, again, I feel we don't need those policies. So, I was going to eliminate those, and that was a suggestion by, again, they're okay, but not necessary was the feedback that I got. So, that would be, again, the changes for section K, relatively short. I'll have Dorothy, send her a note and clean those up. And again, with the changes that we just had, if you all approve it on a second reading.
One comment on KLG. I kind of think we should leave that in there because I really like that it codifies what we're going to do from the safety aspect and maintaining that robust relationship with law enforcement, because MOUs are good, but they have a tendency to go away or not be honored. And this just gives us another path to maintain that relationship. And again, I know we have a good relationship with police department, but times change, right?
I don't, again, I'm fine either way, so that would be the.
I would have to reread it though, because our MOU is very extensive and very specific. And so, I don't disagree with your overview, but I don't want to just put it in unless we read it carefully and look at it again. I didn't look at it too carefully because of this discussion. And it could be, again, one of the things that we do first in our hopefully continuing review of our policies after we finish completing the packet. So, I would prefer not to put it in, but other people may feel differently. So, are there other thoughts on that?
We can always add it. As you said, this is a document that we're constantly changing, so.
Again, I still want to keep it in, again, because MOUs change or they get, you know, they're no longer valid. And again, I want to have us have a mechanism to maintain that relationship, not thinking it's going to happen. But in the event it did, I want to have something that helps us keep that relationship.
Again, Ms. Simon, it's a very, very broad, very straightforward. I don't think there's any harm in keeping it in.
Okay, I just hadn't gone over it. Thank you.
I'll make the motion. Mary Ann, do you have all that detail? Okay. I move we approve the K section of the policy manual with the changes described by Dr. Conti.
Second?
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? The chair votes aye. That's 5-0-0. And for people who are watching without a policy manual in front of you, we've been working on this for six or eight months. And when we're done tonight, I think it's going to be able to go up on the website, and we will have a full policy manual that's been reviewed at least this year. And hopefully, we'll continue the review policy because it's been a long time since we've gone through all the policies. The policy template we're working off of are both our old policies and also a template that the Massachusetts Association of School Committees has created that many, many districts use, and that's what we keep saying. It's the MSEAC policy. So, we are using a lot of theirs. We're keeping a lot of ours. And we are now going to move on to section L. Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I explained at the first reading, there's no current Burlington section L. There are four policies. The only suggestion that I had was an LB. If we keep the MASC policy manual, you are part of an educational collaborative. You're a part of LAB, Lexington, Arlington, Bedford, Burlington.
Belmont.
Belmont.
And Watertown.
Watertown now, so.
LABBBW.
So.
So, are you recommending we add that language into the policy?
Again, we could. I don't think the policy actually precludes us from being a part of the collaborative. So, we can certainly add that we are a member of LABBBW to the policy. But again, my recommendation, just because we don't have it, is we should adopt the MASC language as a second reading. If you all want to fine-tune it in your future work, you would be more than welcome to do that. So, again, looking for a motion to approve section L from the MASC.
As is?
As is. We can add, again, I will add the, that Burlington is currently a member of the LAB collaborative to LB.
So moved.
Second? Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? And the chair votes aye. That's 5-0-0. Can I do a little shout now?
Yeah.
They'll be out of date tomorrow.
Yay! I know, I know. And so, the next step, Dr. Conti, we have a couple of outstanding subpolicies, but can this, what we have approved, go up on the website sometime soon?
If, when it goes up on the website, when, again. Um, if, when it goes up on the website, um, when, again, Ms. Presser um, finishes, um, it'll actually be ma- maintained on the MASC um, website, so we'll just put up a link. Um, and people will then go to the MASC website and they will maintain a policy manual. As you make changes, MASC will update and make those changes in your policy manual. So you'll always have an updated policy manual sort of moving forward. And even if you want to go back and sort of start reviewing again and cleaning up some of the language, you would do that based on, again, an updated uh, policy manual. I think it'll be much more um, efficient in the past. There is one thing, Bob, that I think we need to address that we took out, that I was asked that we need to put back in is um, um, there's a policy, and boy, I had it written down and I'm not going to find it, where um, employees can drive students in their cars with, we have a release form that they need to use. Um, we eliminated that policy because we were purchasing um, vans. And Bob, we got news that um, yeah. So through the chair, not great news. Um, so um, seven and a half months ago, we put an order in um, with Ford and um, last week, we were notified that uh, 2023 chassis were end of production. Um, so our order has been canceled. So we can um, move to purchase 2024s, um, but we don't get to jump any line, we start all over again. Um, so that is one step. Uh, myself, Dr. Conti, Nicole Kosher, and Athletic Director Sean Hart did have a meeting uh, to discuss some other possible options of potentially maybe going out to bid, um, and maybe broaden in our scope a little bit. But again, uh, we have not done that yet or finalized that, but we still are interested in vans, but that avenue is closed and we just have to look at a new one now.
Well, that's unfortunate news, but thank you for updating us on that. And so my guess then is that it's going to take a, a couple of weeks maybe for the updates to happen. Uh, do you want us to take a vote on that, Dr. Conti, tonight?
I do. Again, Nicole, again, from, from above, said policy EEAG was the one that we removed. We need to put it back in. So um, again, and we'll use the existing Burlington language. If you all could um, reinstate, um, given the situation with the vans, policy EEAG, then we can, we can have um, staff continue to do what they did.
We have a motion. Ms. Monaco, mo- moved?
Uh, second.
Second.
And Ms. Masardo seconded, and is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, that's five zero zero.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
So now we can send it back to Ms. Presser at MASC to get it finalized and then once it is available on their s- end, we will link it to ours. Are we thinking a couple of weeks, maybe?
She's been very responsive to us, so um, I'm, I'm assuming um, the big sections are done. So I think if, uh, for her to get these two sections completed shouldn't take very long. And then um, um, I will, we'll be very excited to inform, to inform you that the policy manual is, is up and posted, so.
Great.
I'll let you know that.
Well, I want to thank you, Dr. Conti, for working and Ms. Presser for going through all this. I want to thank the committee, it's been a long haul. Um, I think this is really important work. The policy manual is one of the three responsibility, or the policies are one of the three responsibilities of a school committee member. We're responsible for policy, budget, and hiring the superintendent, those are our responsibilities. And I am really delighted that we've done this work, even though it's annoying, to put it mildly, but it's really important. Um, and like I said, I think in the next couple of meetings, I will be looking to start a subcommittee that would be an ongoing committee to review our policy manual. Um, I know that most school districts do a, a policy review every three to five years. And so I am looking forward to uh, having that conversation. Thank you. And now we will move on, Dr. Conti.
Yes, ma'am, to uh, facilities and finance. So the Fox Hill School um, Building Committee is next. We had a building committee meeting last night and I'll turn it over to um, Ms. Masardo or to Mr. Kuna if you want to um, um, provide, and I think we got updated on sustainability possibilities and um, potential uh, reimbursements from the state programs. And we started to look at some mass scaling of some different um, uh, building layouts from the designer. I'm not sure, I, I don't want to shortchange anything, so I'll um, let you all sort of add to that. Um, the next meeting um, of the Fox Hill School Building Committee is um, November thirteenth. At six o'clock. Um, what was, um, we were informed that at that meeting, they would have um, more detailed in regards to pricing information for the sustainability options and some potential more detail done on the building design and other um, potential price impacts of some of those different designs, that would be class locations, whether the building has two stories or three stories, and even potentially where the building is located on the, on the site. So we'll start to get more and more um, um, detailed information as the, as the project continues to take shape. There's a very important submission before the end of the year um, from the, from the project. Um, and then a lot of the detail work would continue um, from January through the, through the spring.
So is there any further update from what Dr. Conti just mentioned? Nope, okay, thank you. All right.
I was away for most of it.
You did a good job, Dr. Conti.
Okay.
All right, next.
Uh, next is the um, high school update and I'm going to defer to um, uh, Chairperson Bond or, um, again, I'm, I don't know all the dates uh, in my head, so.
So um, we did receive the RFSs and they've all been ranked by uh, the committee who was selected to rank them. Um, the next meeting for the um, presentations, I guess, of the, the finalists is on November second.
And we don't know the times because we don't have the interviews yet, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, yep. So we, we have to get the interviews set up, but that's the date of the interviews? And um, huh?
Does it have to be the date of the interviews?
Well, that's the date we kind of selected, but.
Well, Nicole threw it out there, I didn't know if it was final.
Right.
Because I can't do that.
Okay, well, we can discuss that later, maybe pick another date if we have people missing who'd like to be there. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, and next, Dr. Conti?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, the next is the standing agenda item for Pine Glen. I don't have anything to um, add, it was just to request that this be a standing agenda item um, um, moving forward, so I have no content on that agenda item.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Quick question. Um, we're still on track as far as going forward for the air conditioning.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, so um, as of right this second, I have no news to update the committee to, uh, but yes, we're on track for it.
Um, so yeah, we have not gone out to new bids yet, but we are still exploring options.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, and um, there is one item of business that was unanticipated. Um, uh, I had thought we had taken care of this last June, um, but most of you will remember that um, uh, when the, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees holds their joint conference every year, and that's what we've been calling MASC all night, um, I will be attending it, no one else was able to this year. Um, and there's an opportunity for our uh, school committee to be represented at their delegate assemble- uh, assembly to vote on resolutions. And I am, would like to be that official voting delegate, but I need a vote, thank you.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, so I am now the all, the, the voting delegate at the MASC conference next week, thank you. Um, now we do have need, we do not have need.
I was, I was, um, that was a just in case and so, um, we do not have need for executive steps.
We do not have need for, so we know what Ms. Monaco's going to move.
I already did.
And a second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the chair votes aye, we are now adjourned.